Good afternoon, everybody. This is the Town of Greenwich Planning and Zoning Commission meeting virtually on Tuesday, March 5. Before we start, some announcements, we have four postponements. The first one is item 358 Shore Road. The next two relate to Greenwich Country Day School, items eight and nine. The first one is for a lot merger and the second one is for a final site plan and special permit. And finally, item 11, 215 Old Mill has postponed its final site plan and special permit. This evening, if we will need one of the alternates later on. And Mr. Wells will be seated for Mr. Yesky as he has to leave early. Should we need a second alternate, Ms. Jenkins would be seated. With that, we will begin with the regular meeting. I am recusing from the first item, so Mr. Wells will actually be seated for me on it and I will leave you. Oh, and I'm recused for personal reasons.
Okay, so this is a map extension to Tommy Road. Who's representing tonight?
It is I, Mr. McRae.
Okay, so we're looking for a map extension for 90 days, correct?
Yes, we needed to add a few more notes to the Mylar, which I was hoping to have signed before tonight's meeting, but that has not happened. And we were running out of time, so we would ask that you grant us the auto, essentially the automatic 90 days. So that we can get that in order and have it signed and recorded.
Okay, great. Commission members, anybody have any thoughts, comments?
No.
Any comment from the public? Okay, hearing none, I guess we can do a motion on this, correct, Mr. Loro?
Yes, please.
Okay, so to Tommy Road, PLPZ 2023 296. And that was requesting a 90-day extension to approval subdivision required for section 6279 of the town's BZR. Therefore, motion to approve the requested extension, noting the following. All conditions of the original 111423 approval shall be continued and the 90-day extension will make the new Mylar filing date on or about June 3, 2024. Okay, how do we vote? Mr. Jaski?
Aye.
Mr. Low?
Aye.
Mr. Levy?
Aye.
Mr. McRae is an aye and Arne, you're the alternate today?
Yeah, I did. Did you have a second or you don't need it?
We didn't have a second.
I second.
Okay, Mr. Low's second. Great, thank you very much. I'm such a newbie. Okay, so with that, we motion passes and we can move on.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Our next item, the second item is As For Me In My House LLC. This is also a request to extend the Mylar filing period. Mr. Hegney, are you representing the applicant?
I am, Madam Chair, and we request the 90-day extension so that we can have the Mylar completed and submitted to you for signature.
Okay, this is for 27 Richmond Drive and this is a final subdivision that creates two lots. And does the commission have any comments or questions on the extension?
No. No.
Does anybody from the public wish to speak on the extension for As For Me In My House at 27 Richmond? Seeing no comment from the public, does anybody object to closing this application at this time? Seeing no objection, this application is hereby closed and we would entertain a motion.
Okay, this would be 27 Richmond Drive, PLPZ 2023 385. Applicants requesting a 90-day extension to approve subdivision required for section 6279 of the town's BZR. Motion to approve the requested extension, noting the following. All conditions of the original 1112823 approval shall be continued. And the 90-day extension will make the new Mylar filing update on or before June 17, 2024.
Do I have a second for that motion?
Second.
Mr. Low has seconded. Mr. Low, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. McRae, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Wells, I'm sorry, no, not Wells. Mr. Levy?
Aye.
Mr. Yesky?
Aye.
Albin is also aye and with that, the motion passes 5-0 and we move on to the next item. Mr. Hegney, you're on the next item as well, I believe.
Yes, I am, Madam Chair.
Okey dokey. The next item is 267 Greenwich Avenue Associate LLC. For final site plan for proposed change from use of as funeral home and office and residential to retail space at 267 269 Greenwich Avenue. This is better known as the NAP Funeral Home. Mr. Hegney, if you would proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, mission members. If you could bring Rudy Ridberg in as well.
Rudy, if you would raise your hand. Mr. Ridberg, if you would raise your hand. You got him. Oh, I got him. All right, he's joining.
And if we could go to the second slide, please.
There you go.
So what we have in the upper left-hand corner is a photo of how the building appears now. You can see that shaded or lighter portion up at the the top of the building. That was all covered by, right where the cursor is, by the same kind of Gothic facade that is on the first floor level. That was removed in 2000 because of its poor condition and and the safety issues that were involved in it. What we have on the lower portion is first, what is again sketched on the left-hand side of what is on the first floor elevation. Now, the middle photograph taken in 1906 when there were no buildings on either side of of this structure. And it was as a retail store with a door on the right-hand side to get to the second and third floors. And then double doors in the middle for access to the the retail space. We are looking to restore that. What I would, there was comments at the briefing yesterday about the age of the Gothic facade. Spoke to Matt Murphy, who's the owner of the building and operates NAP's Funeral Home. That that actually was installed after the original Frederick Douglass Knapp had passed away in 1935 and his son, who's Fred D. Map, constructed it sometime in the late 30s. So you had the little picture of what the facade was like up until the late 30s when the Gothic portion was added. The NAP's Funeral Home moved over to Hamilton Avenue during last year and the property's been on the market for retail tenants for about a year. And for the most part, what the tenants are saying, what the prospective tenants are saying is when you have a retail facade, let us know. We'd be very interested in renting the space. And as a result, he is not, Mr. Murphy has not been able to obtain a tenant for the space. We did go to the Historic District Commission, who liked the facade the way it is. But that's not going to enable us to to find tenants for the retail space. And that, this is our prime retail zone in the CGBR and the purpose is to have retail continuity. I would also add funeral homes are not permitted in the CGBR zone, so this would be making it conforming.
Mr. Hegney, Mr. Hegney, P&amp;Z reached out to the Historic District Commission. And we shared with them that yesterday at the briefing, there had been some discussion of whether a hybrid approach was possible. Where it was opened up for retail on the ground floor, for the retail visibility and continuity on the ground floor. While retaining some element of the historic Gothic. And somewhere in the write-up, by the way, we saw 1906 for the original building and 1909 for the changes. But regardless, it's still a long time that the Gothic has been there. And as Ms. Jenkins pointed out yesterday, there is a sentimental attachment for many, for many residents to that Gothic facade. And if we could retain that character, Mr. Levy said it very well yesterday that he felt it was just a a touch of appeal on the avenue, that if we could retain something of that while opening up for the full visibility for retail, we understood the need to be supportive of of business thriving on the avenue. And just were looking for some reminiscence of what that was. Would your client be amenable to that?
We had a discussion about that yesterday and one of the things that Mr. Murphy wanted to share with you is the condition, this is a terracotta material that is on the facade. And if we could turn to the next few slides. It was the one Pat that I sent over as a replacement this afternoon. It had photos in it.
Okay, let me see if I can find that.
So you, do you want to make your point about the terracotta while Patrick looks for the pictures?
Yes, I, perhaps it would be better for Mr. Ridberg to explain what what the material is and what the condition of the facade is.
Mr. Ridberg, if you would go ahead.
Okay, great. Thanks. Thanks, everybody. Yeah, I want you to see the photographs. I think you'll see. We were involved in this building back 20-plus years ago. We've done work in this building on and off for a full 20 years. I updated some of the interior of the of the funeral parlor back around that time as well. And the facade, you probably saw the Historical Commission photograph of the Gothic facade that was at the freeze, at the, on the photograph that was, we think was built in the 30s. And it was failing at that point. We went, we went back to Town Hall, I think maybe A or C at the time. I don't think HDC was a an element in 2000 or so.
What happened, what happened, Mr. Ridberg, is the commission wasn't consistently sending the National Historic District to HDC. And we changed that, I'm dating myself, but I want to say we changed that around 207, 2008, something like that.
Okay, so when we went, we went back to them and and this building. So it is terracotta tile material that has been, it has, some of it has a rebar in it. And this product is very difficult to maintain weatherproofing. You'll see, once the photographs hopefully come up. What is, what's on, there we go now. You'll begin to see that this, here, here's the bracket that's outside the one of the entrance doors. This may be the entrance door to the second floor apartment and the third floor apartments. And and you can see the cracking in the material that's there. This is not easily repairable. Mr. Murphy has been repairing it over the years. It's in dire shape and it's, it's, you can see right there above that arch that all the cracking in there, water's getting in, infiltrating. There is some rebar that's built into these, into this product. There you are at the roof. They covered it with some asphaltic cement to try to stop it from leaking through. But it's not any, it's, the tiles are cracked, frost, water has gotten in there, frozen and cracked them, so.
Mr. Ridberg, yesterday what we talked about is, Patrick, can you go back easily to that first slide you showed us? So we talked about a simple thing, what we, the the Gothic detail that you're showing us is cracked, is also blocking the the retail visibility and clutters those doors. So we talked about having that fascia, that fascia that with the NAP name in it be retained so that something with that semicircle over it, so that something of the history. The other option, and we would send you back to HDC to look at this and make a decision. What if you just designed from new with the, to something that is reminiscent, that incorporates the details of the past? And so, Patrick, if you would just outline what we were talking about, just that top piece. Because that adds that piece of curve and it doesn't take away from your retail. I personally would rather have you decide this with HDC. And whether you, and that we also encouraged you to, even if you had to do from new, that you incorporate oh, how do the architects say it? A reference to the history? A nod to the history.
An homage?
There you go, an homage is even better. An homage to the history. And go ahead and do it in new material, but that somehow that the people who are in the National Register Historic District are looking up and seeing that reminder without the business owner being damaged by it in any way, they have full visibility for their retail and yet there is that reference. Do you think that Mr. Murphy would be amenable to that? To pursuing this with HDC?
We've already presented HDC. I don't, I, I, I think that they want to either see the facade pretty much as is or try to modify it to some degree.
Yeah, well, if, but if you go back to them and you say you were with the commission, and by the way, the staff, the P&amp;Z did have that conversation with Mr. Bishop. It that, that we were going to try to find a hybrid. If you go back to them and say, look, the commission just asked us for an homage. And can you, and here's what we're thinking. And just if they're good with it. We want to be flexible and support the business. We just want to keep some sort of reminder. I've got three hands up, so I'm going to stop talking. First, Mr. Yesky, then Mr. Loro and then Mr. McRae.
Okay, I'll finish later when you're, when you're done.
Yeah, yeah, because that gave you time to say yes, because you hadn't said yes yet.
I probably won't.
And then Mr. Levy, Mr. Yesky?
Yeah, not, I love the 1906 look. So it's not unanimous that everybody wants a piece of history on this building. Maybe Mr. Ridberg knows this. He's very active in the retail market. Do you know what the vacancy rate is on Greenwich Avenue and is it going up or going down?
There's very little vacancy on Greenwich Avenue right now. There's a lot of interest in this building. And the problem is everybody first, when it was a funeral parlor, said, oh, boy, we, you know, we don't want to be as a part of a funeral parlor history, let's say. Can we get rid of the facade? What can we do? And I, I think if you want me to get into my, my, my rest of my sayings, I'm happy to say it. Do you want me to listen to the other three people?
Listen to the other three people.
But the vacancy rate right now is very minimal. There's a high rate of interest in this building.
Okay, and we, and we want to be supportive. And we want to be supportive, well, with visibility for the retail. So we want to be supportive of the, yeah, we want to be, and that's what's in your narrative. So we want to be supportive of that. Mr. Loro?
I'll defer to the commission members. I had a question about the the rendering here on the this page, so I can wait.
The scale's been bothering, Mr. Loro. The windows ended at a different point in the Tuesday.
Yes, and thank you for reading my mind, Madam Chair. Are the windows changing, I guess, since we're asking the question, are the, because it just doesn't seem to be the same.
The answer is no.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's just the way that the image got stretched. Okay, thank you.
Do you guys, you guys know, Mr. Loro did study architecture undergraduate, so those kinds of details strike him. Yeah, I think his degree is partially in architecture.
Maybe he can moonlight on weekends with us. Let me make some comment.
No, wait, wait. Mr. McRae, go ahead and then Mr. Ridberg, we're going to give it back to you and just make notes so you can listen to everybody at the same time. Mr. McRae, go ahead.
I'm finding that the 1906 restoration works for me. I think actually that homage to the previous use could be done in, you know, even just by a plaque or something. The building already has a plaque on it. Not a landmark, but just a note. I think actually Mr. Ridberg may have brought this up, that it's, it's an issue with that, that trying to facilitate the use of this space. The connotation to the funeral home may be an obstacle. And I think actually we've only got one portion, just the lower portion that's still retained of the 1930 work. But we have a very good example of what was the original building from 1906, which goes back to retail continuity on the street. I think trying to maintain something of the Gothic kind of mixes the architecture a little bit too much. Whereas the 1906 actually provides a very good continuity from the street all the way to the cornice itself. It also has that opportunity to provide a proper place for signage, which actually could get cluttered and make the facade that, you know, difficult to work with. The 1906 actually seemed to actually where you kind of, kind of bake that into it, where the signage would go. Its awnings, those kind of things. And also I know a lot of retailers talk about signage on the glass where the pedestrians are. I think trying to maintain any of the Gothic work, stonework down there below would actually create a situation where there's not enough glass for seeing goods inside the, inside the space. And same with not enough glass for putting some graphics, pedestrian graphics on it. Also, Mr. Ridberg, it's my understanding actually right now, the northern door, this would be on the left, actually is is false. There's actually a room behind that. Is that correct?
Yep, there are two handicap toilets back there, yes.
Okay, so whatever would happen, actually, that that needs to, those, those would have to come out and I guess that's on your plan to facilitate the 1906 plan?
Correct.
Yes, but Mr. McRae, we're only talking about that rectangular piece on the top. We're talking about all the Gothic going away, so I don't, Mr. Levy, go ahead. You need to unmute.
Your microphone also was going in and out.
Don't know why I did that, because I was.
It's perfect now. No, yeah, it was spotty.
Mr. Levy, if you would go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. The, I, I did want to mention that the precast that you are proposing to replace the existing storefront with is I understand that that's, that's what people do, but it, you know, the stone looks better if you use the limestone. I think, the question is, I don't know if it was originally limestone or not, but if you use, if you don't use precast, you, you might come up with a, a look that looks more historically correct. The precast has a tendency to look like whitened teeth. So I don't know if it blends that well with something more, if it's, if it's just a renovation, it's one thing, but you're, I think that you're you're, you're saying that you want to restore the facade. And you have a datum going that that goes through the base just above this soft cornice line, which kind of, they kind of mimic each other, the the details somewhat mimic each other. Which is, it's a nice soft detail. But the other thing I wanted to ask you about is the the repair that was done on the third floor facade. You're showing on the rendering of, of what you proposed to do, that I just want to move my cursor over so I can look at myself, that there is now, you have a coursing going through the third floor windows. And I don't see that on the original facade, which is fine, doesn't make, it's fine, but I guess maybe that's the, the the line of the new brick versus the old brick. And I was wondering, are you planning to do anything to match that brick a little bit better, so it doesn't stand out quite as much as, as newer brick above the the original brick? But the, the precast stone is kind of like a you know, you're not using a lot of stone here and if you used a limestone, not only would it look better, but it would also last particularly well and is really quite durable. I think that the, there's a fragility to using precast. And it's tough to modify in the field and, you know. And once that cracks, there's not much you can do about it, but it's easier to replace limestone. So that, those are my comments as far as if you're not.
Come out, where do you come out on the question of the facade look itself?
I think that I, I, I do like the idea of somehow melding or preserving some of the history on the facade. I think that if you, if you did keep the Fred Knapp sign, it doesn't say anything about funeral on it. So I don't think there's any stigma there. But nonetheless, I like the idea of placking as well, because it's just a great way of immortalizing the rich history of of the street and the building.
Okay, so you've got some options, Mr. Ridberg. Mary Jenkins?
Yes, having, having been cited for my fondness, it's actually people who have come up to me and said, they're not going to change the front of that, are they? So I've, I've expressed, the public's opinion is expressed to me. I actually personally prefer the 1906 version. And the only thing I would say about it, I was actually quite impressed with it, is that perhaps the doors and the windows can be a little more, a little closer to the 1906 version. I mean, it looks like a very modern front with, and I understand large plate glass windows, retail is perfect. But for example, the doors, the doors are quite different and there's quite, there's a lot more door than glass in the 1906 version. So I want to make it clear, the fondness has been expressed to me by members of the public. I actually really like the 1906 and I would just like to be as close, as close as a retailer will take it to what it would have looked like for a retail store at that point.
Mr. Levy's back.
Yes, and glomming on to what Mary said, I if you ask somebody, do they like the facade, they might say yes, but they may not know what the original facade was. So I appreciate that as well. But nonetheless, I think that the intention of the applicant is is a very good one. I just, and I also know that the the crew that's working on this is is very capable. I just hope that they're able to take some of these suggestions and implement them.
Okay, Mr. Yesky, you were done? And Mr. Wells, did you have anything? Were you done, Mr. Yesky?
Well, not to contradict Rudy, but
Sorry, Mr. Wells.
I walked down the avenue and there are some new shops coming in, but I, I think vacancies are up. Don't know the numbers. I've been trying to find it online. They just don't come down to Greenwich.
But that's.
But I think there's a feeling, two things. One, we have vacancies. It's a little more difficult to get in there, so I would support the 1906 on two levels. One, I like it better. I think trying to pace something on the building, it doesn't work. It becomes a zebra. And two, I do think there's a vacancy issue, not a huge one, thank God, but it's amazing how it comes back up and how fast that happens, so.
But you're really, you're really just supporting Mr. Ridberg. You're saying, look, you've got to make something as rentable as possible.
Yeah, Mr. Ridberg didn't answer the question correctly.
Yeah, well, you know how it is, but he, both of you were saying, we need to make this rentable. It's, you know, he's not a real estate person. He says, look, we need to make this more appealing to a retailer. Mr. McRae, you're back and then we're going to turn it back over to Mr. Ridberg so we can move on.
Yes, Mr. Ridberg, just with a quick question, the, the brick facade, second and third floors, are you going to be treating that, repairing it, washing it, anything like that?
Yes, Mr. Ridberg, just with a quick question, the, the brick facade, second and third floors, are you going to be treating that, repairing it, washing it, anything like that?
Because it looks crap.
Is it my turn?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Quick, rest it away from us.
Okay. A couple of things. One, when we did the, remove the Gothic that was failing on the top and we basically did the historic research with that photograph of 1906 then, that's how we came up to mimic the top of the building, the fa, the frieze and everything, cornice brackets, everything that's up there. Okay? We did our best. Unfortunately, as you can tell from this yellow sepia tone, we had no clue what colors were. So we did a, they had a painter come in and come up with their best. We were trying to say, look, ultimately this building and, and Matt Murphy at that time, as I say years ago, said, like the funeral parlor, worked all those years. Ultimately, this wants to be retail. So we said, let's try to match this building up top to what was there day one. Unfortunately, what happened is that the two different tones of brick, it was not our intent to, to have a different brick color. That is exactly the limit or very close to the limit of where the frieze was before. It actually was at the top of the window head. And can you, Pat, do you have the, the State of Connecticut resources inventory form that shows the building?
That's, that's, we know, we know that these were, I think I've shared, I shared with the commission yesterday. In fact, if I didn't, I'm remiss, but I double checked it over the weekend. The National Register, which is the Department of Parks, as I remember, the US Department of Parks, has photos of both the Gothic and the original, and this is listed as a contributing building to the National Register Historic District, but the photos are both there. And the reference is, of course, the most historic is to the origin, is obviously, but it is listed as a contributing building. And as I remember Mr. Ridberg reading the write-up over the weekend, the Gothic is in the discussion. So it's very hard for us, for any of us, to use the National Register filing as a reference point because it gives a nod to both the original, it has a photo of the original and also this. But I'm hearing, if I'm not mistaken, I'm the only one who feels very strongly about retaining an homage to the, the Gothic and having that, that fascia. Mr. McRae would apparently is happy with some sort of acknowledgement of the history of the building, a plaque. Mr. Levy was agreeable to that. Ms. Jenkins, even though she's heard commentary from people, said that she also feels that the original is more consistent with history and more conducive of business. Mr. Yeski wants to be supportive of business. Mr. Low, did you say anything that you want to repeat? Because?
I haven't said anything, yes, but I'm, yet, but I'm happy to.
Go ahead.
Say a couple, I think, I don't think you're the only one that feels in favor of some homage. I think it very much depends upon the nature of the homage. And I don't, I mean, it seems to me that this whole front, first floor appearance, it has to be changed. I mean, it just, it does. So I, I, I think, I think it would behoove us to allow Mr. Ridberg to consider what we've said and, and take a crack at, you know, offering up a couple of different options that we can look at rather than sit here and try to design this ourselves.
Let's do that and move on. So why don't we do that, Mr. Ridberg?
Do I not get a chance to finish answering the questions of the other people?
Oh, I'm so sorry, Mr. Ridberg. Go right ahead. I was trying to.
Are you not familiar with how this commission is run?
Oh, no, I know. But I, I'm, you know, I feel passionate about this building. Okay?
So do I. I'm really hard.
I've been to many funerals, family funerals out of this building. And, you know, we worked inside, we worked upstairs. But when we, that's office space up top, any, all office people have looked at this building, said, we will not be above a funeral parlor. So it's another reason why we want to get this building, get this building updated. But let me just finish a few points. Where I was going with the upper facade, why it looks different. The brick that's below, it was a very special brick that was built early on. It's the same brick we had when we tried to convert D W Rogers into Restoration Hardware. The brick, we culled enough brick off that facade to do repairs when we put on the facade for which is now Bedderidge. The problem with this building, they couldn't get anything close. And the day I went there, that's the best they came up with, which albeit wasn't the best, but it is what it is. So my thinking is we, and that actually at that time, the reason I was bringing up that historic photo, they had Gothic heads above the window, window heads, where now we brought back in the 2000 series, all the old cornerstone's above the windows have been replaced in limestone, or it may have been precast at that time, but I don't, it's a stone finish on there. So we're back to what was originally on the building. So I want to, I would like to then paint the entire brick facade one color. Don't know what it is yet, something that would be monochromatic and that would hide the two different colors. Okay, but would work with the, with the, with the freeze board. I'd be happy to bring that back to HTC at the, at the time. Now, speaking again of HTC, the first comment out of that group's conversation was, oh, we're so glad that you want to ultimately bring back a building to what its historic use was, because to a hearing or two before, we had a project in front that they wanted me to bring it back to by tearing apart part of the building. And he said, we wanted you to bring that building back, but here we don't want you to bring this building back. So I really feel strongly about this 1906. We bringing it back all the way down to the facade. The horizontal two brick elements that are there, we're going to bring them back, which is partially there. We're going to bring that back. We'll have to get new brick as close as we can at that point, which is above the word where signage is. And we, my guys did call it cast stone, but it is meant to be limestone. I think that's what was there. I don't think they had precast in 1930, 1906. So my intent was that that was going to be individual stones laid on top, not a panel of precast. And I believe that that was set up, you know, like a brick pattern, but it was in, you know, 12 inch by 18 inch high pieces of limestone that we would secure to the building. Now, also, you can see that that original 1906 building, the center line was in between, it wasn't on the center of the facade, it was on the center of the remaining large space with the door on the right to the apartments. We're bringing that all back. And then the elevation that we drew within of the doors fronts are kind of mimicking what's there. It could be wood frame, it could be aluminum, it could be whatever, but the intent there is to have a nice entranceway. Somebody's going to, this gets a lot of sun in the afternoon. We really need an awning, which is what was there before. And if you put on the, the nap front that's there now, you really can't get an awning. And I think to add a little piece of Gothic that's, that's in dire need of repair to put on there, somebody's going to go, why, why is that little blurb there? And I think this way we would have an awning over the front entrance. We have place for signage properly done. And then it would be an awning over the door on the right. And we did add more glass in the door than what was there, but we added a horizontal piece, you know, of the, of the bulkhead on either side of the door as, again, as an homage to 1906. So we feel very strongly that we do not want to have any Gothic left on the building. Make believe it's back to historic street of 1906. And how many, how many towns have done that? Well, go to Williamsburg, I guess, but this is what we're trying to do. We think it's a good, good solution and we'll, we're happy to go back to HTC with it and see if they'll accept our color tone or whoever, ARC or HTC.
If you would, if, if I could just for a second, Mr. Ridberg would go back to ARC and what I would suggest at that time, if that's the direction they're heading in, the awning would need, goes to ARC, not to HTC. So the awning and signage, and I assume he's going to have some lighting on the building. So all of that, once we have squared away. Now, folks, we have a long agenda and we're really, we're really working this. So could we land on something? I believe that I, as I repeated, most of you are in favor of transitioning back to the original 1906 with potentially a plaque.
Plaque would be great.
And I, I believe that, and I'll be honest, I, I very strongly wanted to keep a piece of it, but I see to the, to the group. Mr. Levy, one more, and then we really kind of need to wrap up and move on.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did want to reiterate that there is a coursing that goes through the third floor windows, which doesn't seem to be original. And that's the dividing line between the, the two different colored bricks. So.
Might I comment on that?
Yes.
I'll tell you exactly why now. Again, the brick that I started to say before, that the brick that's on the lower porch of the building, it's a very unique brick. It is not a normal two and three eighths deep brick. It's, it's a veneer brick that's quite narrow and thin. So you can't get it. So when they came in with the new brick, they bought a traditional two, two and three eighths inch brick up there, which already sits proud of the brick below. That was the problem. Okay? And they tried to match it in height as best they could, but it's a brick that has a, like a a cast, not a casting, but a fire in it, has little dots in it. I'm drawing a blank on ironstone, I think. And, and that's the reason why you see that little reveal there. And that had to come out far enough to pick up where the old Gothic ended. And I have a feeling it went a little lower than what they had before, but I think when we paint it all one color, it'll, it'll blend nicely. Right now, it stands out like the sore thumb. I agree with that.
Yes, and I, I was just wondering if, if maybe you could, hopefully maybe you'll find a, a brick that's a little bit closer in dimension and, and replace that upper story. But also you have to do the same thing down at the storefront to replace.
Above, above that storefront there, yeah, there, it looks from what the photographs, we're going to do a little more research on it. That horizontal piece, and we think that that was a small piece of limestone, top and bottom, and an infill with the same brick. Okay, so that it wasn't a brick profile. We think it was a limestone top from whatever, when you zoom in as best you can on the photograph.
Yes, yes, I agree. But you're having the same problem with trying to, you know, and it's going to be more apparent that if you, when you use a different sized brick, that it won't match what's above. So it, it would be nice.
A small piece in there, yes, we're going to try to, I have a brick consultant already looking at the brick. And we're going to try to get something that's in that, in that, in that same, same size and shape, not to match the brick way up top.
Okay, so here's, okay, we're working, wait, wait, we're working this in way too much detail. It's not our job to do this. I've tried to end this three times. This is the last one. Okay? Here, here's the deal. I'm hearing that the commission is in support of going to the 1906, generally in support of going back to the 1906. The materials, the color, the awning and the lighting. I'm asking you for color, Mr. Ridberg. That's not normally something that you necessarily works with, but you go back to ARC on those. Patrick and I will get back to the HTC and tell them where this came out. You go back to the ARC on that and you get consistency and materials for the facade. That is basically not our job, folks. Okay. So do I have any public comment on this application? And sorry, Mr. Hegney, I cut you off, but I think the discussion's gone enough.
I, I was going to agree with that, Madam Chair.
Wow, Mr. Hegney. Does anybody from the public wish to comment on the Fred Knapp building? No. Okay, hearing no comment from the public. I believe that we could close this. Does anybody want to make any final point regarding where we go? I am going to suggest that we first entertain a motion to return to the 1906 to incorporate comments that were raised by the commission regarding the material and the consistency and that the applicant go to the ARC. Nick, you heard me say it. Go to the ARC for the review. And that again, I would like the applicant to continue to consider, I know Mr. Murphy's listening, that you continue to consider any kind of reference and homage that you think works with this. I do feel very strongly that it's a piece of history on the avenue. Would love to have a reminder of it. Can't make you do it. Would sure love to. And with that, does anybody object to closing this application at this time?
No, no.
Hearing no objection, this application is therefore closed. Mr. McRae, I would happily entertain a motion similar to what we have agreed to.
Okay. Two sixty-seven Greenwich Avenue, application PLPZ. Twenty twenty-four oh four seven, final site plan, seeking approval to change the use of, to retail residential construct interior ratios and facade changes on eleven thousand two hundred forty square foot property located in CGBR and CGI zones. Commission finds that the HTC discussed the proposal at their ten eleven twenty-three meeting. The sewer division issued comments on two twenty-eight twenty-four requesting that the applicant submit a signed letter of acknowledging receipt of their P and Z comments. And the proposed facade renovation is keeping within the original nineteen six retail storefront design. Therefore, motion to approve the application noting the following. Pursuer Division comment, the applicant has submitted a signed letter of acknowledging the receipt of P and Z comments. They did three four twenty-four. The applicant shall retain and reinstall the existing historic marker on the new facade. The applicant shall provide a new plaque indicating that the site was a former site of the Knapp Funeral Home. The applicant has agreed to paint the upper brick facade in a hue similar to the original brick. The applicant shall appear before the ARC for review of awnings, signs, lighting, and masonry paint hues. And the applicant shall address any and all remaining staff or interdepartmental issues. Anything else you'd like to add?
Yeah, the only comment I would add is that there should be a sentence that the photograph of this original building does appear in the nomination for the National Register of Historic Places, which was nineteen eighty-nine or so. I will send the, the correct date to staff, if any of you have it, but I've got it somewhere. So that this photograph does appear and is consistent with this building being listed as a contributing structure. The truth is, it's the Gothic nature that was listed as a contributing, but it, it is listed as a contributing structure. With that, do I have a second?
I just wanted to suggest that we say something about matching best efforts to match the existing brick.
Perfect.
On the, on the base that's being, the storefront that's being replaced as well as on the third floor.
Perfect.
Part and.
All right.
And also. When you say matching brick, is that brick color or brick size?
And/or.
Both. He wants both. He wants consistency in the facade.
Isn't the idea is to get a uniform color for all the brick?
Yes, and, and uniformity. He wants consistency across the facade. Anything else?
Getting, getting the size is, is pretty important. That will create a, a very good look. The, the confusion of views of having different sized bricks does muddy up the, the restoration of the facade.
Yeah.
So that's what we're trying to look at. And also, the idea that the, the doors of, and the storefront itself should probably be painted and not, you know, not be.
Doors, the doors are partially painted. They, they are partially painted doors. They're, they have glass in the top. And then the, the, the double door has glass in the top and then is painted on the bottom. Mr. LaRoe, did you want to add something?
Yes, Madam Chair, you asked about the dates of the nomination. It is eighty, eighty-eight and eighty-nine. They're, they're two separate ones for the municipal center. And then the, the Greenwich Ave.
Great. Eighty-nine is, is the Ave. The municipals, the municipal buildings are eighty, the year before, right? Okay, thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
All righty. Mr. McRae, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Yeski?
Aye.
Mr. Low?
Aye.
Mr. Levy?
Aye.
Albin is also aye. And with that, the motion passes five nothing and we go on to the next one. Thank you, gentlemen, and thank you, Mr. Hegney for, for agreeing to move aside. All righty. Can you bring Mr. Zhang, Mr. Zhang Zhang Tang? Can you bring Mr. Zhang, Mr. Zhang Zhang Tang? Okay, is he here? I know I saw him at the meeting earlier.
I'm trying to promote him right now.
Okay.
Mr. Tang, please select the or accept the promotion.
Now, Mr. LaRoe is trying to promote you. When it says the host is trying to promote you, just click yes. We did this last time, remember? Perfect. So he's coming in now. And there you go. Nope. So there he is.
I've just, I've enabled him to talk, but.
All right, Mr. Tang, go ahead if you would unmute. We wanted to have you fully present with us, but if you would at least.
My turn?
Yes, you're all set. Thank you, go ahead. So before I start, hold, before you start, hold on. The next application, number five, is Zhang Zhang Tang for final site plan to construct an addition that connects the main dwelling to the accessory structure and converts this lot to a two-family unit, a two-family dwellings. Thirty one Prospect Prospect Street in the R six zone. They're going to be adding parking in the front yard, and that is the question before us. Go ahead, Mr. Tang.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Zhonghian Tang. I'm owner of thirty one Prospect Street. To continue discussion from February twenty first. And I already submit my latest plan to Patrick and Bianca. And I, to adjust last time, I relocate the stairway to the south. You can see from my drawing to south side of the, to avoid facing the driveway. So also, I going to prefer to ask committee to consider add a two car in front. And therefore, we still have one foot four inches wide for screen planting. Or I can use the green ivy wooden fence for the screening. So that's the three thing I already make adjustment. I try to do as I, the best I can do to try to make my front yard look pretty, at the same time, try to balance the functionality of the parking in order to have two car over there. So I would like to ask in committee to consider relief or exemption of the couple inches of wide of the screening for parking. So also, this plan already received approval from Highway Division and also engineer survey. Everything seems like we have enough space. So right now I do everything I can. I'm in full trust and confidence on in committees' vote.
Mr. Tang, can you, can you discuss the second plan, Plan B?
Yes, there's a Plan A two, basically, B.
Mr. McRae, you said B, right? I heard you say.
Yes, B.
Thank you.
Yeah, B was very kind from Patrick last time. And because at that time, my plan was one bedroom, so one car was quite logic. But after I looked into my F A R from zoning enforcement department, they tell me say I have four hundred, four thousand one hundred thirty square foot. So I have plenty room. Right now, currently, I only have one thousand seven hundred living square foot. So I do need to have two car in front and and also I submit the two car parking to the Highway Division, and they they approve my concept. And that's why I like to ask the committee to go extra mile and to consider two car for two bedroom this time. Thank you, Margaret.
Mr. Tang, the floor plan in Plan B is one bedroom?
Yes, for Plan B is one bedroom, for Plan A is two bedroom. And I did bring to the Building Department asking where and last week, I think early this week. And he say no issue, no concern. So that's why I went back to Bianca and spoke with her, and I submit both Bianca and Patrick the latest Plan A.
Mr. LaRoe, can you bring up page eight of the staff report, please? Mr. Tang, the difference between the floor plan for A and B just changes the names on the rooms, but it does not change the rooms. You're just calling them something different, but you haven't changed the the rooms to eliminate what could be construed as a bedroom. Is that correct?
I, Plan A and Plan B differences is one of the Plan B call, I believe, I believe it's a dining room, so I made that as a bedroom.
Yes, so the original Plan A shows it as a bedroom adjacent to a living room. In Plan B, it just changed the living, the living room or the bedroom to a dining room, but the plan did not change. Is that correct?
Yes, that's the only change, that only.
Okay, but there's no change in the plan itself. It was just change of the name.
That's correct.
Okay. Great. So actually, as we see, there's no really, there's no difference in the plan between A and B in the floor plan of the unit. Okay. Mr. LaRoe, if you could bring up Plan B, that would be page nine of the staff report. Okay, so Plan B shows one parking space with a landscaping going around the landscaping. There was no reference to actually the width of that planting bed at the front along the street itself. Can you tell me what the width of that is?
Everything I propose is within my property boundary according to Highway Division. And the depth of my front yard have eighteen, eighteen foot four inches. Minus seventeen foot wide for two car, I still have one foot four inches wide for planting bed.
Okay. So in the one car space, we really don't know what the width of that planting bed is then. Okay. Now, and the intention of Plan B and Plan A is pretty much to pave over the completely, completely the front yard to get that one space to the southern edge of the property. That's what we're seeing here on the on both plans?
Again, yes, and I rotate of still front stair to other side according, Mr. Marguerite common last time, and avoid facing the driveway. So I do very compromise. I do everything I could, and I relocate that to other direction. So we still have plenty space in front for the two car parking.
Okay, and your proposal is actually to install a wooden fence?
Yes, thank you.
And then grow ivy on the wooden fence?
Yes, and if Bianca can go to the the drawing I show and let a committee member to take a look at what I propose, actually, I propose either either ball to ball fence with a natural grow. I I took advice from Bianca. Instead, artificial, I I I made as a natural grow of ivy, English or Boston ivy with wooden fence.
Okay, are you aware that actually the wooden fence would be compromised by having the ivy grow on it? And that the fence itself would not last very long? Having the vegetation on it?
I very well aware of that, and I thank you for your your concern. And I do everything possible, and because this is my property, I do want to make everything pretty. And I I I want to make sure everything, wooden fence keep in good shape, and also the the greenness will grow.
So, Mr. Tang, that is your decision. Just for a second, Mr. McRae, would you, Mr. Low's had his hand up if you would, he would comment?
That's quite right, yes.
Am I on?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so as one drives south down the street, the the proposed ivy fence really does not effectively screen the proposed parking area. At best, that fence extends what appears to be only about forty percent across the width of the of the lot. And it's quite open. So if you're, if you're walking, if you're driving, the front yard is quite exposed, even if it has the fence extending somewhat across it. I don't see how you, I don't see how we effectively screen for the, for our purposes this space. Google Earth shows three cars parked in the front of the building, two right in the front yard and one in the driveway. And in all, it's a very narrow space. And I think, isn't there a utility pole in the midst of the proposed parking area? That's a question.
Thank you.
Go ahead, please. I'm sorry.
The pole over there is on the sidewalk area, doesn't affect to my property at all. And I did mention with the Highway Division, they say that both things are not, not interfere with each other. So and they say, as long as I propose, everything is within my boundary, border boundary, so they are okay with that.
Okay, I I I still am concerned about the effectiveness of the proposed screening. I I just, it may work coming from the other direction from the south. But I can't imagine it working at all effectively from driving from the post road.
Right, and I think six, what is it, six one fifty five R regulation? It needs to be adequately screened. In our opinion, it needs to be adequately screened to provide for the parking in the front yard. Is that correct, Mr. LaRoe?
Yes, screening in the front yard of the parking is the operative thing. It's prohibited action unless the commission finds it to be screened properly. Mr. McRae, if you don't mind, I'm going to flip around to the drawings here. So I just want to make sure everyone's aware. The the Highway Division has no approval authority on this, only the work in the right of way. So that is the the throat of the driveway. So there is a letter from Highway saying that conceptually they're okay with the repair of the apron, but this parking area is not anything that the Highway Department permits, nor is it something that they have to permit. It's it's all within the site plan authority of the commission. Mr. Lee, Mr. Low, I'm sorry, was was your point that the extension of this hedge is not enough to to do the job? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah, it's very open, approaching from the north, heading south on Prospect. That it's 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 wide open. I mean, you don't, the screening, the screening only potentially would work if you're looking straight at it perpendicularly right at the middle of that proposed, where that green strip is there to the right.
May I ask if the commission is okay, would would the suggestion be to perhaps extend it this way, if if anything, and and that way? There there may be an issue where getting close to the curb cut, it will block the sightline, but there there probably can be a few feet closer to that direction. Would that, I guess, if that was done, would that be something that the applicant and the commission would think would be adequate for the the discussion?
Right, it's getting closer to what the satisfying, the screening issue. I think it actually is, Mr. LaRoe, Mr.
Yeah.
Low has indicated that actually it needs to be as much as the full width along the street as possible.
And and the other thing is that the regulation specifies that the screening is landscaping. I don't believe a fence is landscaping.
Yeah, I can't find an example where we've accepted the fence in lieu of trees, so that that's true. However, yeah, screening, yeah, I guess we, the commission's free to interpret, so.
But it's.
This is a very, again, I emphasize, it it appears to be a very narrow space.
Right, so where are you guys coming out? Mr. Levy, do you want to add something? And then if everybody wants to.
Yes, yes, please, Madam Chair. So I I think that extending that front edge of of screening is a good idea. I do think that as Mr. Marguerite has mentioned that, you know, using, say, a privet hedge, that that it is a particularly good screening material. And although it's not completely evergreen, it still provides plenty of screening, even in the winter months. And there are other, there are other options too that are evergreen. But privet is something which is very well tolerated, grows like a weed and and is no stranger to this, to Greenwich and this street. It's a well-used material in Greenwich and elsewhere because it's it's so versatile and so durable. And that, it's it's very inexpensive. And that's why people like it. So the the other thing is, if if it were possible not to have the the one car in the front as as Plan B shows, not go so deep over to the other property line and we're shy of it, you would have it would be probably, you'd have a little more green area. And the, having three cars tandem, I I don't understand exactly how that works. So I'd love an explanation, but it's just a little awkward to have that kind of configuration when you're in such a tight space. But I appreciate the the idea of adding parking off the street, just that this is a a awkward design.
Okay, all right, Mr. Low, and then let's try to wrap this up, folks.
Yeah, I just, I just one comment anecdotally, my own experience with privet is that it's it's not, it's not a great screen for a large portion of the year when it gets cold and it sheds leaves.
Can I say something?
Yes, of course, Mr. Tang.
Yes, and thank you for both of your comment. In response to the Mr. Low's comment, I agree with to extend couple more feet toward to the driveway. At the same time, I would do, I'd like to ask committee to consider a good balance in order to have enough room to maneuver, maneuver, maneuver a pool, a space for car. So that's something I would like to asking to keep reasonably open. At the same time, and add a couple feet more, try to make sure and car itself has been screened. And also. And also uh, uh, another thing I proposed uh, the ivy, uh, the planting is something called little D, D, V, Vamber or uh, Vamber, David, David V, Vamber or Korean uh, Vamber. No, uh, those are three I can consider to make a choice for the screening. Or a committee member uh, expert on this can give uh, some of suggestion. Say that what kind of mountain, or maybe mountain green or wolf?
Okay, so.
Something.
All right, so Mr. Tang, we can have staff, we can have a staff member give you suggestions on the planting, Mr. Lowe, then Mr. Yesky. And then let's um, all we have to do is decide whether or not there is sufficient, is adequate screening, which is landscaping of for, to have the parking in the front yard. And then we have to decide whether we want Plan A or Plan B. And then we can move on, Mr. Yesky, and then Mr. Levy, and let's move on after that.
Well, I would love to hear the answer. Mr. Levy asked the question I was gonna ask, which is explain to us the three tandem cars, how that's gonna work. And number two, do we have, have we ever approved anything like that in any other part of Greenwich, new, maybe existing, but new?
Maybe that's a Patrick question. Because people don't even come to us. Um, people don't even come to us on a single family with such a parking configuration. For example, um, at my house, you have to park all the cars one behind the other. But I'm a single family, so I don't have to get anybody's approval. So yes, this exists that people line up in the driveway like that in single families. And we have approved it in other two families. I can't think of one off the top of my head right now, but I know I've seen it before. So, but the question again is the parking in the front yard, otherwise this would be an administrative application. Do you uh, find that there would be sufficient screening for the parking in the front yard? And we can refer it back to staff for that. And do you want two spaces in the front yard or one?
Or not?
All right.
Can I say something?
Yes, Mr. Tang.
Yes, and uh, if Bianca can show page uh, fourteen of one thirty-three uh, field point row uh, after research indicates that property also R six zone and uh,
We know it's out there.
Yeah.
But Mr. Tang, some of it we may not have approved. It may have been done a long, long time ago. So we don't need to look at that. We've seen the pictures in your application. Mr. Levy, or Mr. Yesky, are you done?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Levy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So um, I just wanted to mention that uh, it might be a good idea to use some impermeable surface for the front uh, paved area that you're, you have here. Um, which soften the look and make it, let uh, uh, not uh, be perceived as um, uh, just a, a sea of asphalt um, um, on approach to your house. I think that would be a nice soft, the ni- nice way of softening um, uh, the curb appeal of, of uh, 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 of the project. And um, uh, I like the idea of you extending the um, uh, the hedge uh, along the front, but a couple of feet is, is not going to do it. It really needs to be uh, um, much more than that in order to achieve what we're really looking for. It should be uh, the uh, go uh, much closer to the driveway.
So.
This is about, I mean, it's looking at the, this, it looks like it covers about half of the frontage to the driveway. Well, it should be substantially, substantially all of it.
Right, so you and Mr. Lowe are of the opinion that there is not sufficient, that it is not adequately, that the proposal doesn't have adequate screening by landscaping for the parking in the front yard, is that?
Right. And Mr. Yesky.
And Mr. Yesky. That you do not believe the proposal has adequate screening in the front yard for the proposed parking.
Yes.
Okay, let us, does anybody from the public wish to comment on this application? All right, this is thirty-one Prospect for a proposal to add parking in the front yard. Alrighty, um, does anybody have anything further to add at this moment? Now, are you comfortable with closing the application, or do you wish to leave it open uh, for further work? Uh, whether we closed it or not, depending on how we decided, we could always send Mr. Tang back to staff. Um, what do you guys wanna do? Are you comfortable with closing?
Good to close.
Okay.
Good to close.
All right, Mr. Yesky?
Close.
Mr. Lowe?
Close.
Okay, so with that, Mr. McRae, do you wanna give a shot at a motion?
Mm-hmm, I've been scribbling notes here as we go from everybody, so let's give it a shot. Uh, okay, this is um, now what did I do with that note? Uh, there we go, thirty-one Prospect Street, application P L P Z twenty twenty-four. Um, for final site plan, the applicant is requesting final site plan and special permit approval to construct in addition to connected existing detached accessory structure to the main dwelling and convert a single family dwelling into a two-family dwelling with a part, with parking spaces with a front yard setback located on a seven thousand five hundred ten square foot property in the R six zone. Whereas the required property came before the commission is a pre-application at the seven eighteen twenty-three public hearing under file P L P Z twenty twenty-three two six one. The commission finds that per section one six one fifty-five, the proposed parking in the front yard is adequately screened. Um, must be adequately screened per the applicant's plan. Right, okay. Uh, by landscaping. Uh, for the applicant's Plan B proposal, the unit in the connected detached dwelling will have one bedroom. For the applicant's Plan B proposal, only one vehicle will be parked in the front yard. Uh, the applicant has received a variance of side yard setback from Z B A on ten twenty-five twenty-three under file P L Z E twenty twenty-three zero three three. Conservation issued comments dated uh, two thirteen twenty-four indicating recommendations to the proposal. Sewer Division issued comments on two fifteen requesting the applicant submit a sign letter acknowledging receipt of their P and C comments. Engineering drainage, the applicant has submitted a drainage exemption letter dated eleven twenty twenty-three and wetlands, issued a permit needs questionnaire on five twelve twenty-three indicating no action required. Therefore, motion to approve this site plan noting the following, and let me get through all of these before we have a discussion. Uh, per sewer division comment, the applicant has submitted a sign letter acknowledging the receipt of P and C comments. Prior to zoning permit, the applicant shall submit a revised site plan by Connecticut licensed civil engineer indicating the following. For conservation comment, the applicant shall plant one deciduous shade tree along the southern property line between the street and the residence. A curbed two-foot-wide planting bed shall be constructed along the street frontage. The two-foot-wide planting bed along the street frontage shall be continued the length of the new parking space and continue to the edge of the curb cut. A row of privet hedge, uh, one gallon bucket size shall be planted two feet on center in the new planting bed along the southern pro- and along the southern property line between the street and the residence. The hedge shall be let uh, to grow to a minimum height of six feet and trimmed to a minimum, at a minimum of twice a year. Uh, and on the plan as well, a plant list uh, with sizes, names, and the count of plants. Prior to zoning permit, uh, the applicant shall submit a revised floor plan indicating one bedroom in the connected detached building. Prior to zoning permit, the applicant shall submit revised floor plans indicating removal of the common partition between the proposed living room and dining room and the door to the remaining space so as not to inadvertently create a second bedroom. Prior to building permit, the applicant shall return to the planning and zoning commission for further review if there is any revision to the site, any portion of the building, or any unit count that is submitted for zoning permit or revision as the result of building department or plan examination. And the applicant shall address any and all remaining staff or interdepartmental issues.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Levy has seconded. Mr. Yesky, how do you vote?
Nay.
Mr. Lowe?
Nay.
Mr. Levy?
Aye.
Mr. McRae?
Aye.
Uh, Albin is gonna go with an aye, but um, we have a fail to carry.
Yeah, there are additions that the commission would like to entertain that would.
Let's talk about, let's talk about. Let's talk about how we would reframe this. So essentially, um, Lowe and Yesky um, have concerns that there isn't adequate screening being provided. Uh, the motion did say that a return to staff for a review of the final landscaping would be required. Correct?
I don't believe, yeah, I don't believe I put that in, but that's, if you wanna have that, that's something we can put in.
So why don't we, may I suggest that we add that the review of the final that, subject to um, final review, uh, Patrick, help me with this, of the landscaping by uh, staff. And that should there be a concern about the final proposal, that it would return again to the commission?
Yeah, I think that's fine. I think Mr. uh, McRae's original motion was very prescriptive, so it, it, that's, I don't have any issues with that.
Okay, so it gets extended, the landscaping gets extended. I believe we took out the fence or not?
Yes, took out the fence.
The landscaping gets extended. Uh, Ms. Dieter helps Mr. Tang with his um, plant selection, so it's not invasive species and it's evergreen if possible. Um, and if there's an issue, Mr. Tang would then have to return to us. Um, if we, uh, could we try the motion on that basis?
Okay, I think the.
Motion as amended, does the motion as amended have a second?
Second.
Mr. Levy has seconded. Mr. Yesky?
I don't like the car in the front yard.
Okay, and you don't feel that the screening is sufficient?
Correct.
For the car in the front yard to ever really cover the car in the front yard, Mr. Lowe?
Nay.
Mr. Levy? No, go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
Do you want me to explain? I mean, I, I, I could go on and on, but I, it's uh, the, the, the space is so uh, small uh, to begin with, and um, it's just open. I don't know how you provide effective screening. And our regulations are, are clear about uh, what we, what we should do if we find that, that there is insufficient uh, screening. And I find whether you take this, whether you can get a, 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 you know, some sort of uh, vegetation in there at all, that's gonna do the job. And I, I've already said, I don't think privet's gonna be the thing that's gonna do it. But I don't think taking it right over to the edge of the driveway is gonna solve this problem.
All right, Mr. Levy?
Aye.
I'm sorry, was that aye or was it why?
Aye.
Okay, so Mr. Levy is in favor of Mr. McRae.
Uh, just a quick question for Mr. Lowe. If it wasn't a privet hedge, but um, uh, like a, uh, I think it's a Virginia, juniper Virginia, like an eastern red cedar?
Yeah, no, I, I, I don't think this uh, site's gonna work uh, this plan.
Uh, is that because?
Irrespective of.
Planting beds too small, or what is, what is, yeah, tell me so I understand.
Irrespective of the selection of the plantings.
What's ever left over, the curb cut is actually too much of a gap along the street frontage to hide the car? Is that pretty much it?
Yeah.
Yes.
Dragging on. I leave at six.
Alrighty, it's five twenty-five now. Mr. Um.
McRae says aye.
All right, so we're stuck at three two.
Did you, did you uh, vote?
Yes, I had said aye the first time.
I know, but you have to vote this time, don't you?
Yeah, okay, so we're stuck at three two. Um. Well, there you, three, it fails to carry. So if I change my vote, it would just be, it would still fail to carry. Um, well, uh, should we make a motion to deny and see if we get any better?
Yes.
Alrighty, so let's go with a motion to deny. And again, the motion to deny is quite straightforward, because on that one, we, all we have to do is find whether or not the front yard parking is adequately screened.
Based on what the applicant has presented, correct?
Right, based on what the applicant has presented, is, is there the, do you believe that the, uh, when, what we have discussed, do you believe it will be adequately screened? So that is the decision you make, so um.
Can I ask a question though? Uh, if there was a, a three-foot bed, is, does that help the issue? If there was a three-foot bed along, uh, along the sidewalk?
Probably not. A three-foot bed is, i- i- it's just the width of where the planting is gonna be. It's actually the, the physical vegetation that creates the screen. So what we're looking for is something to go, that can grow in a two-foot, which is most everything. It's just, what's the end result of the vegetation when it's matured? Does it create a, a complete screen across, do all of the plants create a complete visual block of the parking in the front yard? So, worst case scenario, two feet with uh, green giant doojas in them. That, that creates the, that creates the thing, but we've had the, the big issues with the arborvitae, so that's why the privet.
But so i- if you put in a fence with, with the screening in front of it along the street.
Okay, but fencing does not count as landscaping. Okay, guys, we just have to move on. Okay.
Okay, should I make a, okay, make a motion for denial?
Make a motion to deny and make a decision here.
Okay, so it's uh, same as above, above the, whereas it's the same for the pre-app. Um, the commission finds that per section one fifty-five, uh, the proposed parking in the front yard is not adequately screened uh, by vegetation. Uh, therefore, motion to deny the project without prejudice.
All right, Mr. Um, do I have a second? No, wait, do I have a second?
Aye.
Mr. Levy, Mr. Levy has seconded. Mr. Levy is voting in favor of the denial?
Yes.
Aye, okay, Mr. Lowe?
I, I am voting in favor of the denial, yes.
Mr. Yesky?
Aye, denial.
Mr. McRae?
Aye.
Well, okay. Um, all right.
We're wait, we're waiting for you.
I know, it's for, it's, I, I felt like the applicant could get there working with staff, but um, so um, I'm gonna vote against the motion. I'll vote nay, because I thought that the applicant could, could probably get there if he continued to work with staff. But the motion is carried for one and the application has been denied. Um, sorry, Mr. Tang. And um, feel free to come back to us again, um, if you would like.
Uh, and talk to staff.
Well, yes. All right, now, um, for our next application, do we have Mr. Hasland on deck?
Um, and we, uh, do we wanna enter the public hearing or?
Yeah, hold on, I gotta wait to ask Mr. Hasland.
Oh, thank you, sorry about that.
That's okay. You know, it takes a team. Okay, Mr. Hasland, if you raise your hand. Maybe he's left us. There he is. Alrighty, so Mr. Hasland, hello. Um, would you be, would you be amenable to combining items six and seven, the Nimbus Realty applications?
Of course.
Alrighty, so with that, we will now begin the public hearing, Mr. Bazili. I think we haven't heard from you, so just to make sure we can hear you, would you just, just say something?
Um, hello, yes.
Hello, perfect, we got you, okay, hello.
Ready to go, as you instructed, okay.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Okay, so with that, Mr. Hasland, we are now going to application six and seven, Nimbus Realty LLC. The first one is for a final subdivision to merge twelve parcels at Benedict Court and at Benedict Place, and the addresses are all in our agenda. This is, the second application is Nimbus Realty LLC for a final site plan and special permit to construct an one hundred and twenty-unit assisted housing development where forty percent of the units, forty-eight units are restricted to eighty percent of the area median income. And that is section pursuant to section six, eight thirty G of the Connecticut General Statutes. Mr. Hasland, I understand from staff that you all had also arranged for the Housing Trust representative to make some comments about how this was worked, how this was discussed with the Housing Trust. I leave it to you to pick when you would like that person to come in. I believe it was Mr. Barilak?
I think it was settled upon Madam Chair on Bill Finger being as the new co-chair of the trust coming in, but I, I leave it to Mr. Finger.
I leave it to the trust, whichever, what you guys want to do. So the question, the reason that you and staff had discussed this was there was a question about how the trust negotiations had worked, one hundred and twenty units, forty percent affordable, and how we came to, how the trust came to that. Mr. Hasland, whenever you want Mr. Finger to speak, be our guest.
This is my suggestion, Madam Chair, if I may. Phil Wharton, who is the managing partner of Nimbus, the applicant, negotiated with the trust, the current proposal, basically, or at least in discussions with the trust, came to the current proposal. Most of his discussions initially were with Mr. Barilak, but ultimately, obviously, he met with the trust body itself. I believe Mr. Finger is knowledgeable as to the discussions and how they got to where they got to. My suggestion is before I introduce my entire team for tonight's presentation, that we have Mr. Finger come on and together with Mr. Wharton, discuss basically how they got to where they got to and, and why we're proposing what we're proposing, if that's acceptable to the Chair.
Of course, we have Mr. Finger and Mr. Wharton are both in the room. So however you want to do it.
So Chip, you want me to go, go ahead and?
It's Mr. Hasland and Mr. and Mr. Wharton's decision.
Yes, if you could, Mr. Finger, thank you.
Thank you. As indicated, my name is Bill Finger. I am the current co-chair of the, of the Affordable Housing Trust Board. When the applicant first approached the trust, they did so through Bob Barilak, who at that time was our chairman. Bob is no longer a member of the board. But, you know, he has, he shared all throughout the process, the discussions, negotiations, so I'd like to give the commission a little summary of how we arrived at our recommendation, or not our recommendation, how we arrived at the point where we issued what we call a contingent commitment letter to the developer. So the developer's initial concept was to utilize the set-aside provisions of eight thirty G to enable them to construct a relatively large multifamily structure on the site. To utilize that statute, they would have been required to put in place a forty-year deed restriction limiting tenancy at thirty percent of their units to people making no more than an average of seventy percent of the state median income. Early on, before they had completed assembling all of the parcels that are now part of the proposal, the developers approached the trust, specifically our chair, our then-chair, Bob Barilak, to learn what the trust could do for the, for them in this particular situation. What was discussed was that if the developer accepted some mod, some modest financing from the trust, that would enable their project to qualify for the status of an assisted housing development under eight thirty G. The most important result of this shift from a set-aside development to an assisted housing development was that the developer would now be able to get the, get, set rents, excuse me, set rents on their affordable unit at up to eighty percent of the area median income, a substantially higher level than would have been required as a set-aside development. In exchange for this material financial advantage, the trust would require that, that the developer either build a smaller structure or provide a greater percentage of affordable units. Since the trust has no power to actually compel anybody to do anything in particular, the choice between those options was necessarily left to the developers. In this case, the developer opted to offer more affordable units. At that point, the developer was requested to provide the trust with financial information about his proposed development. This is a relatively, you know, methodology that the trust uses with all applicants or potential applicants come in front of us. So when we asked for the financial information, that was provided to the trust. The trust examined this financial information to determine that the developer was proposing to effectively give back to the town through additional affordable units, the vast majority of the increased economic value, which the developer enjoyed by moving to the eighty percent of AMI rent as an assisted housing development, as opposed to going with the thirty percent of the units at an average of seventy percent of state median income as a set-aside development. There were some little nuances here and there, but that's essentially where the trust board fell in terms of this project. We had a vote. The trust board has seven voting members. The vote was unanimous vote to issue this contingent commit, commitment to the developer, which we recently did. I'm more than happy to take any questions and try to answer any of the questions that members of the commission might have. And if Mr. Wharton and Mr. Hasland has anything else that they would like to add about the discussions that I might have left out, you know, I, I welcome those comments.
Folks, questions on why it's the way it is?
Mr. Finger, how many affordable units were in the building, as proposed in the building prior to the trust, and then how many were added in?
So originally, Mr. MacRae, they were proposing that thirty percent of the units be affordable. We now have, as the application in front of you has, forty percent of those units being affordable, forty percent of the affordable units in the project.
Okay, so thirty to forty.
And that was originally a hundred and ten units, or was that?
Yeah, at the time when they came to us, they had, as I indicated, I don't think they had put together all the parcels yet in, in what's now the overall subject, or overall parcel that the hundred and twenty unit plan is, is proposed on.
So it went, so it added fifteen affordable units. It went from thirty-three to forty-eight.
Correct, and we also, Madam Chair, were able to contract to purchase one more property. So as before, there were eleven properties that were to be consolidated. Now there are twelve.
Mr. Finger, was there any discussion about the physicality of the building, losing its story instead of more affordable units?
Well, as I indicated, what we usually and always do with the developers, we say, look, in exchange for our modest financial assistance, where you can get an assisted housing designation, we either want a reduction in the size of your project, or an increase in your number of affordable units, or both. And again, it's not something that, you know, this is an eight thirty G development. We don't have the ability to dictate to the developer which option to take, if any. In this particular case, the developer chose to increase the number of affordable units and keep the size of the building, as is, which I believe is six stories.
Right.
I mean, I, I will add that part of our discussion at the trust was looking at the character of that particular site and the neighborhood with office buildings across the street. Pretty much adjacent to the site is another apartment building. I think it's six, I believe it's six stories. Across from that building, there's another six-story apartment building. So we were, we were okay with the decision to increase the number of affordable units, which obviously is, is a benefit to the town, we believe.
We also agreed to keep the unit mix the same for the affordable units as the market rate units. And we also agreed to disperse the affordable units throughout the building rather than segregate them to, to one area. Because we thought that's more in the spirit of the program is to, you know, provide that, those options.
That, that is correct. However, there's nothing in the, in the eight thirty G that actually requires that, but we certainly appreciated that.
Any other questions from the commission?
Just probably for the design team. How, the additional affordable units, how were they incorporated into the physical building? Were was something added to the building to make it bigger to provide for them, or were they actually just the geometry of each one of the units changed, so you could add them all into what you had proposed at six stories?
It's directly related to the fact that there was an additional parcel that was added, which we actually flagged in the pre-app application, that it was kind of pending. We weren't completely sure yet at the time. And that additional parcel was included, and then it just allows for a more flexible floor plate to add those apartments.
Which property was that? Twenty-three Benedict?
Well, I forget the number of those, southeast corner.
Three Benedict. It's a single-family home, three Benedict.
I see it there. Okay, thank you.
If I could just add one more thing. So the increase from one twelve to one twenty was only the result of that parcel. What we did in the negotiations, instead of allocating the thirty percent of all the units to affordable, we allocated forty percent. So it didn't, it didn't result in a change in the building at all. It was just how to, how to divide up those hundred and twenty units.
And I have a question for Mr. Finger, as I remember you, you participated in the development of the Greenwich Affordable Housing Plan along with Mr. Barilak.
Correct.
How do you see this proposal relative to the Affordable Housing Plan, which was approved by the RTM?
Well, there are several things that we were trying to accomplish. One is, as indicated at P O C D, the town had the desire to increase the number of affordable units throughout the town. So that was one of the primary goals. The other primary goal of the trust board is on projects, these eight thirty G projects, is to find ways, make the scale of the project more in keeping with, you know, the, the immediate environment of the town. So both of those goals of the ordinance were met with this project. Increase affordable units. We felt that the size was consistent, so even though we could not dictate to the developer to reduce the size, we think we accomplished what the intention of the ordinance is and the goal of the P O C D.
And the consistency with the surrounding was based on, on the existence of other buildings of equal height?
Equal height, density, office buildings across the street. The fact that it's a block away from Greenwich Avenue, the ability for residents to be able to walk to shops, to walk to restaurants, to walk to supermarkets. You have Stop and Shop in Acme, not that far away. Obviously, the ability to walk down the street to the train station. We just thought it checked so many boxes.
Okay, Mr. Yeski, you had a question?
Yeah, just, we're getting into the next, but I'm curious, when it was a hundred and twelve units, how many bedrooms at that point? I guess that was minus the one lot, but how many bedrooms were in the hundred and twelve unit suggestion?
You have to unmute.
Yeah. Sorry, Mr. Yeski, I don't have that handy. I can, I can get that to you, but it, the unit mix was, was, was unchanged. We, we kept the same unit mix and just incorporated those two units into the whole project, so.
No, I understand, but we're, we're gonna get into the discussion, other areas I'd like to get into, which is the sewer issue, the parking issue, which kind of are driven by bedrooms, not the number of units. So I was curious. Do you have any background on, this is the third time that this site has come to the commission? And there were, I don't have all the units. Maybe, Patrick, you have the units? But what's been the drift of the number of units on this, on the, on this site? I understand you added an extra parcel, but I'm just trying to get a flavor for order of magnitude, the number of units, and number of bedrooms. Because I, I think that goes back to the, the amount of money you would need from the trust. But more importantly, it goes at what we have is an eight thirty G issue, which is public health and safety. So I don't know whether anybody has, does anybody remember back, Chair, Madam Chair, do you remember how many units?
I, I, I have an idea, Patrick, that it was seventy the first time?
I don't have a recollection. I know it was more property than what this project represents, because it was considering, the, the last version before this was considering
The park.
The, the town parking lot, right? And before that, I mean, if we're going back to the original, I think Mr. Trampok had an idea for Hotel and Conference Center, and so it's, it's not always been apartments only. It's, it's been a, a, you know, it's been a lot of other redevelopment ideas.
Well, I'd love to see that, just because again, I'm not, it's just not the units, it's how many bedrooms. And, and, and that would obviously drive how many parking spaces. So I'm just trying to understand whether this unit, whether this particular development is more dense than the last two, or less dense because there were other things in the other units. It would be important to understand. But that, that would drive into the, the site questions about sewer and a couple other areas, but maybe that's premature to get into. The, the only reason I'm pushing this, Madam Chair, as you know, is I have to leave to go to the Central Middle School, yeah.
In thirteen minutes, I'm watching, I'm watching the clock.
I appreciate that.
You're leaving, and Mr. Wells will take over for you. Mr. MacRae?
Yeah, I think from the staff report, as I see it, it was, it's two hundred and fifty-one bedrooms and a hundred and twenty units.
I present, yes, correct.
Yeah, that I got, that I got. I was looking for the history.
The two hundred and thirty-four was, was when it was a hundred and twelve units. But I don't have the whole history. I've only been involved in this project for three years. Mr. Trampok has been involved for I think more than, more than a decade, so we can get that history.
Well, and also bear in mind that the very first application was a hundred percent market. So that was a different kettle of fish. The, the, the first one to be a, the first time it came in as a, as an eight thirty G, it was a hundred and ten units.
How many bedrooms?
I'm looking. Two hundred and nine. So when it came in, so when we went from a hundred, so when they went from a hundred and ten to a hundred and twenty, they went from two hundred and nine bedrooms to two fifty-one.
Well, even when they went to a hundred and twelve, it went to.
Now, I'm looking at the pre-app for twenty twenty-two. And that's the first time it came in as an eight thirty G, as I remember.
Okay, that's, well, it, it just seems like there's more bedrooms, which means more sewer capacity. And I don't know whether we want to get into that, or we want to stay on the trust fund, but we'd certainly like to get there before I have to leave.
Well.
Do you want me to address that, Madam Chair, briefly?
Yeah, and I think we don't have to ask trust questions anymore. I think, Mr. Finger, unless you want to add something in clarification.
I have nothing to add. If anybody wants to ask questions before you come here up, that's fine.
The only thing I was gonna add to this is that the Affordable Housing Plan makes a reference to the fact that the longest waitlist for affordable units at the Housing Authority is for family units, for three bedrooms, that that's where the waitlist is the longest. But again, someone said to us in a meeting the other day that whatever you make that's below market, there's a demand for. Mr. Lowe, go ahead.
I was gonna say, this is related to what Mr. Yeski's been telling, but I, I assume, I, I assume there must have been some correlation between the number of bedrooms, or, or the number, the number of people and, and the number of parking spaces you, you are going to provide. Whether they're required by the town regulations or not, there must be, you all must be working with some sort of.
you all must be working with some sort of formula. And I don't, do you have that? Do you share that with us?
Yes.
Uh, yeah.
Just go ahead, Phil.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's about a one point four ratio. Um, and what that means is, um, we, we're not assuming that the three bedrooms will necessarily have more cars than the two bedrooms. That's usually the case, but not always. But if you just look at it that way, it would mean two spaces for all of the three bedrooms. And two spaces for about a half of the, I'm sorry. Uh, two spaces for all of the three bedrooms and about, and two spaces for half of the two bedrooms. And then one space for the one bedroom, but it may not turn out that way. Um, it may be that there's more demand from, you know, the two bedrooms or, you know, it may not, we're not, we're not, uh, that scientific about it in the sense that we don't know, uh, who the residents are going to be. And, um, we expect that in a transit oriented location like it is in a walk, walkable location that it is, um, there may be, uh, less, less cars per unit. A one point four is where it comes from.
Oh, and I, go ahead, Peter, uh, were you down on that?
Dennis, go ahead.
Just in the interest of time, I apologize, but I have to leave, but I have a burning question. Um, we need eight thirty G. You, your application says we have to understand and balance, uh, the need for affordable housing versus other code requirements. We understand that. Uh, the two biggest things we're concerned about on all three of these site applications was sewer and fire, their public health and safety. Um, the sewer comments make a, a, a reference to the fact that there is an issue. This is not on horse neck, as I understand it, it's on another main line. But I guess I have two questions. Number one, uh, there's a history of here. Has anybody sat down with the sewer department and sketched out what might be the solution to a sewer issue? Is there, beyond, uh, saying there's an issue, is, does anybody have a potential remedy for what appears to be a major sewer concern? Which by the way, is a major public health, which is one of the areas that eight thirty G, uh, addresses. So I don't know, that's an open question. And then the, the second is related, which is, um, this is a building design, you've put a lot of time into it. I'm, I'm just confused, why wouldn't focus more on the fire department, for example? Uh, another issue, th- this is pretty straight for the fire department to, to take a look at the plans to see whether they're acceptable. Now, maybe I missed it, which certainly can happen. But are there any workable plans to satisfy sewer issues? And do you have any concerns about the fire department issuing an okay letter?
Mr. Yeski, if I could just briefly address that, and we may have some of our experts, uh, get into it, uh, more deeply. But, um, we've not been wasting our time since we filed the pre-app, the first pre-app a couple of years ago. And then we had another pre-app with you folks. We have been meeting with the departments of the town at Greenwich to make sure that some of these issues were addressed upfront. You will see that with regard to the sewer department, those efforts have been successful in that the sewer division has indicated that, um, they do not object to you approving this application. All they require from us is a letter of consent that we would work with them and resolve the issues and the framework that they put forth in their, uh, letter or memorandum. So the sewer issue is really resolved for all practical purposes, and you'll see that.
That's not what the staff report says, so I'm confused.
Well, I'm looking at it, it says, if the applicant can provide in writing that they will adhere to the town's requirements as part of the project to complete this reasonable and necessary off-site sewer rehabilitation work, as well as meet the other requirements and satisfy the other comments in this memo, the sewer division would not have any objection to P and Z approving the proposed project. And we therefore submitted the letter of consent, which is a part of your record, uh, and copied to the sewer division. And so that basically, um, resolves that issue and we agree to work with them on achieving, uh, the improvements to the downstream that they're requesting. And they furthermore said.
Um, Mr. Haslam, before we go on?
Yes.
What letter, what letter are you reading there from? What is the date of that letter?
February twenty-eighth.
And what paragraph is that, was you just said, read?
I read that from, uh, page two, uh, the first black bullet point, the last paragraph of that section. And in addition, on page three, uh, where it states comments to be addressed prior in all caps to obtaining zoning permit, and Mr. Fomenel indicates none. So we've indicated that we're going to work with the sewer division and they've indicated that's acceptable to them and that you may go ahead and improve this application as far as they're concerned, based on that letter of consent. So, and we will.
Something, something about that bothers me. I'll come back to it. What about the fire department? Cause that's another issue.
Yes, we also met with the fire department in November, uh, with Fire Marshal Pradika. Uh, we shared the plans with him, uh, including the vehicle access plans for, uh, fire department. He had no, uh, issues, uh, substantial issues. We had a nice discussion, but nothing was raised that we thought would, uh, represent an obstacle to this project going forward. But we'll continue.
And where is that documented?
Right there at the bottom of page two, right there.
Where?
I'm sorry, I was talking to Patrick.
Are we talking about the fire department or the sewer?
This is the sewer.
Now, the team discussed this yesterday after the briefing and we will get something from the fire department indicating, um, that we met with them and what other issues they may have remaining. And if there are any, we will resolve those as well. But the meeting went very, very well, uh, we thought. Um, but if there are any outstanding issues, we look forward to addressing them.
Okay.
Mr. LaRoe?
Yeah, I, I just, uh, Mr. Haslam, I just want to clarify, this, this is the memo we're talking about, February twenty-eighth?
Yes.
This, this bullet point here during the P and Z phase, this is the P and Z phase. So these bullet points.
All of them.
I believe need to be addressed. I don't believe that it's saying what you're indicating that, uh, acknowledgement is satisfactory. I, 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 I'm reading.
Thank you, Patrick.
I'm, I'm reading these as, um, there needs to be some agreement as to the methodology that's being, um, expressed and, and, and those type of things. And I, I don't, I'm not sure that is just acknowledgement. I, I, I interpreted this as being some more, um, analysis. So, um, I don't know if you've had another conversation with Mr. Fomenella, which is fine, but I'm happy to clarify with him as well. But I, I didn't, I didn't see it exactly the way that you, um, that you indicated, but, uh, obviously.
But if you go to page three, uh, Patrick, there's the top of page three, where it talks about comments to be addressed prior to obtaining zoning permit. It says none there. So that's typically means none.
No, 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 it means.
But this, but this one here says P and Z phase and we're.
Yeah.
This is, unfortunately, this is, this is sewers nomenclature, not ours. The, the P and Z phase is, is everything up until the commission's decision. So, um, that, that's typically what that means.
Well, we continue to work with the planning, with the sewer division, um, and we've had good discussions with them. We think we know what they want to have done. There's some additional testing that has to be, uh, done as well. But we don't anticipate any significant obstacles, uh, working with sewer.
Understood.
And I can have, uh, David Ginter, who's our engineer in the project, has been working intimately with, with Richard Fomenell. David, do you want to have anything you want to add to that?
Uh, yes, so David Ginter from Redness Amid. Um, so I've had multiple conversations with, with Rich about this project. Uh, these comments, you know, as I read them are very similar to, uh, comments that, uh, are received on, on multiple projects.
That go into horse neck. We totally know that. We know that when we're going into the horse neck line, and it's not the only line, but it's one of the lines that because there's development downtown, this is very similar. It says, give us an acknowledgement letter, work with us until we have figured out that what we, we need to do this development, what improvements are going to be needed and.
Correct.
And that has to be done during the P and Z phase. There has to be a path. So you're agreeing with that, right?
We, we are agreeing with that and, and, you know, our hands are tied, unfortunately. Uh, you know, the sewer department runs all their own calculations, so there's nothing that we can do. Uh, we provided the proposed, uh, unit mixes, uh, for them. Uh, we provided the existing, uh, water usage from Aquarian Water Company, uh, so that they can, uh, analyze what the differential will be. Uh, and they are relying on C D M Smith to, uh, run all the calculations that have indicated that there, you know, might be some potential issues downstream within the, uh, sewer shed, uh, as, as noted in the comments. And now, uh, C D M Smith and the, the sewer department are trying to review, uh, and prepare additional models to figure out where our efforts will be best met to, uh, reduce the impacts, uh, as a result of this. Um, you know, the, the idea is that we are going to be, for every gallon uh, of, of flow that we're increasing by, we're going to be removing six gallons of flow from the system, uh, primarily through replacement of piping or slip lining of, of old sewer lines to remove stormwater, uh, and groundwater infiltration and intrusion into the system. Um, you know, unfortunately, we have no control over where that is. We need, uh, the sewer department to, to weigh in on that. Uh, but we have accepted that condition that, you know, the six to one, uh, replacement ratio, wherever it needs to be within the sewer shed. Uh, we are on board with that and we're going to work with the sewer department whenever their analysis is done. Uh, and they say that, you know, this, this neighborhood is where you have to do this work. We're, we're on board with that.
Mr. Yeski, do you have anything else? I know you're running out of time.
Well, I do, uh, what, um, I, I think what I'm hearing is that the issues are not resolved, but we can come back to that. I would like to point out, and I did this yesterday, that we're, we're looking for affordable housing. And what they are proposing is something very unique and good for the town, which is the number of three bedrooms. Um, as I read it, they're going to provide, um, what do we got here? Forty-eight three bedrooms, is that right? And thirteen of them are in the affordable section. What's that?
Thirteen three bedrooms that are going to be affordable.
Right, but thirty-eight overall. And the thirteen is amazing because that is the big need in affordable housing, as we all know. We haven't seen, we keep talking about it, but we haven't seen many projects that are going to offer, uh, three bedroom affordable, let alone thirteen of them. So it's an awfully attractive, um, piece of this deal to have thirteen three bedroom. Uh, and I mentioned yesterday, if you assume, and I think someone was alluding to this, that they're really like two bedrooms in terms of parking, which I think maybe you alluded to. Then the parking problem goes way down. It doesn't necessarily fit our regs, but it comes closer. And I like that too, because I think it, it's a reasonable assumption. And we are trying to bend over backwards to get closer to our regs, knowing that our regs are superseded by eight thirty Gs, but I love the three bedroom idea. We haven't seen many of them. In fact, I don't know, I haven't seen any that I can remember in five years. There probably is somebody, but, uh, it's a very big inducement to take a strong look at this project.
And there's a real need for them on the affordable and also on the market rate side. There's a real need for three bedrooms.
I absolutely agree. The first, I think Chair mentioned the first proposal here. I think they had three bedroom, but it was market. It was all market rate. And absolutely, there's a market. There's a, there's a bigger need on the affordable side for three bedrooms and walkable, T O D. Uh, all the shopping is there, wonderful location. So, uh, I, I, I don't want to be a total downer on the sewer idea of the fire, but what you're offering is very attractive in terms of taking a look at the details.
Mr. Yeski, just before you have to leave, I, I want to assure you too, that we're not saying that we're not going to do anything with the sewer issues, uh, until after you approve this project. That's not what we're saying. We're, we're working on an ongoing basis with sewer to resolve these issues. Um, so I.
No, I appreciate that, but it sure sounded like that's what you were saying. So we'll get, I, I, we'll get into it. A sewer is an issue. Um, you know, and, uh, we'll, we'll come back around. I apologize for having to leave, but there's a vote tonight on the final budget for Central Middle School and I'm part of that committee. And so, uh, but we have lots of commissioners to take over.
Thank you, Mr. Yeski. So just for the record, Mr. Wells is seated for Mr. Yeski on this application. Um, okay, anybody else for questions or comments? Um, I don't think we really let you present, Mr. Haslam, but you know, we've been reading this. So, um, we kind of jumped in with questions for you. Um, just as an opener, you have a wide variety of comments, uh, from the highway division is, of DPW as well. Uh, I thought they made excellent comments. Uh, we'd love to see those addressed. Uh, also Beta, a good set of comments there. And, uh, that, that leads, that's really about what the traffic impact is. Mr. Mr. Yeski kept cautioning us yesterday to focus on the big picture thing, which is what are the health and safety issues here? It must be addressed above all. And so, uh, he covered those, uh, the concern about the fire, the fire safety review and also the sewer. Mr. Wells, go ahead.
I just want to comment in terms of, uh, the, you know, the quality of your energy narrative, very much appreciated. And also the direction you're taking in terms of energy efficiency in all electric apartment building in Greenwich, in addition to three bedroom. Many three bedroom units is very, uh, welcome. You've got LED lighting. You've got better than code insulation and, and, uh, windows. You will, you're already, I mean, you have to, but you're already, uh, putting in ten percent of parking for, uh, E V chargers. And you're wiring it so you could easily add it up to another twenty percent if there's demand. And sixty percent of your roof will be green. So, uh, also I think, I mean, we don't have the, the energy, the E MAC response, but conservation, I would say their comments are, are generally favorable. So certainly on a sustainability side, uh, it looks pretty good. Thank you. To me anyway.
Yeah. Levy, Low, McRae?
Um, Mr. Haslam, uh, in the narrative, uh, there were two things that jumped out to me and I, I, you don't have to do it now, but, um, there was a, uh, statement concerning about the plan of conservation development. That it, that's an infill development, this one is in, on underutilized land. Um, if you can provide some information about why this is underutilized, seeing as there's actually five or six buildings there, a couple of residences that are actually occupied. I, I'm failing to see how this is underutilized. I want to get a better sense of that. Um, also, uh, you talk about the central location and that's attractive to those looking to downsize, young professionals, workforce, so on, so forth. If you have background information on it as well, that would be actually most enlightening to us as an eight thirty G. You know, it, do you have market research or data to support that? Because it'd be very interesting to see, um, you know, a building of this size and scale in downtown is attracted to who, but why? Now for the design team, I read someplace in the, in the, um, uh, the notes in the staff report that there is a bunch of easements on the property. I, I see the gas easement, that kind of thing. Uh, the driveways, I think there was one for a sewer, uh, connection or a sewer main through this. If, um, a zoning location survey of the property could be provided with all of those easements clearly spelled out. Um, kind of picking through, I can see some of them, but I want to make sure I've seen, you know, where the sewer is and everything else.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I guess we're losing spaces in front. Uh, how many are existing and how many are we going to actually lose in the wash between what you're putting back and, uh, what's there?
So that he's referring, Mr. McRae is referring to the street parking.
Yes, of course.
Yeah, so I just, as a preliminary statement, um, in addition to meeting with other departments, we've also been meeting with engineering along the way and, and also with, uh, highway traffic. Um, and we do have, once we got the notes and comments on Friday, about five o'clock on Friday, we reached out to DPW and we have a meeting scheduled, uh, for the next Wednesday with, uh, engineering and traffic to discuss some of the points that were raised by them, to see if we can talk them, uh, through. So, uh, many of these hopefully will be resolved before we see you again. We may need to ask for some waivers on a couple of things, but, um, but essentially we're hopeful we can resolve all those with, uh, DPW and the few remaining, we will bring back to the commission. We also, uh, met with the town tree warden. And I could have Eric Rains, who's a landscape architect, go into that a little bit more detail, but I think it's premature. We're basically working well with all the various departments. Um, we, we were discussing those parking spaces yesterday, Mr. McRae. I had counted that we would, uh, ultimately be losing four for that, uh, drive around. Um, but, uh, uh, Dave Ginter was going to recount, he came up with five. David, did you, um, establish what, looking at your plans, what exactly would be the end result there?
Uh, we need to, uh, count that again, uh, Chip. I just counted again quickly and it looks like we might be losing six. So I went the opposite way where you and I were yesterday. So.
Counting, Mr. Ginter.
We'll, we'll, we'll get that straightened out next time we see you.
All right, okay. So, um, that was a concern. Uh, our parking is tight downtown. So that was a concern that got raised by engineering. Uh, Mr. Mr. McRae referred to point five on the DPW comments uh, from, uh, on. Uh, from uh, on the drainage and I, I believe it appears again uh, with the highway comments, but uh, really there's a very good list of comments from DPW, both highway and drainage, which, and then which would be, I assume you're going to address when you return.
Yes, and obviously we hope to address next Wednesday when we're meeting with them to go over a lot of them. Um, uh, Mr. Perez did indicate though, that he hasn't done a full review of the drainage summary report yet. Uh, so we'll be discussing that with him as well. Uh, but yes, we obviously hope to have many of these items addressed before we see you again.
So one of the things that you get asked, and uh, there are two things and uh, you've heard us say this a million times. Um, we're hearing a lot of concern about inadequate parking downtown and we're hearing a lot of concern about increases in traffic. They asked you for two more intersections, Benedict Place at West Elm and Benedict Place at Lewis. I don't know if there's much that can be done to mitigate any change in the LOS or any impact, any impact from this development, but it would be good to know what is anticipated there. Uh, I realize it's um, probably not going to rise to a health and safety issue, but again, for uh, let, quality of life's consideration for, for residents of both that, your proposal and in, in town in general. If there's anything we can do to improve those intersections as they get more traffic on them, because there is the anticipation there'll be more. That would be very much appreciated. Uh, I think the turning does, I mean, obviously you know all the questions, turning movements, all those questions that you're being the drive, there's a ton of details that you're being asked about that make the site plan work or not work. So yeah, it'd be great if you followed up on those. Uh, Mr. Levy and Mr. Low, do you have any outstanding questions right now?
Well, I, I, can I just, I'll just comment on one thing and what you just said. It, you don't think it's going to rise to the level of concern perhaps?
But we don't know.
We don't know, so um, I think it's very appropriate that um, that we see, get whatever, that, whatever data and information they have.
And turning radius is important because you could have larger emergency vehicles, for example. So you, you do have to go through the list. And then look at, is anything a serious concern with this? Do you have any other questions that you'd like to raise, Mr.?
Not now, nope.
Mr. Levy.
Uh, I'd like to uh, reiterate a few things. I'm concerned about the details of the traffic. Um, um, and uh, uh, the, the size of uh, this project. Uh, and its impact on, on the uh, downtown at large. Um, I'd love to have more information on uh, sewer and uh, fire, um, as opposed to just saying, well, you'll take care of it. I, I'd like to have that information. Um, so there's a lot of, a, a lot yet to, to discover with this project that seems to be quite preliminary and um, the uh, uh, I, I don't, I don't really, I'm not on the same page as far as uh, uh, the, the, some of the uh, assumptions that, that have been made with this project where, you know, I, I would go for a lower density and fewer units as opposed to a higher density with more units, given the sensitivity of this downtown area. So I, I'm just not on the same page and I, I just need more information to understand uh, what kind of jeopardy we're putting um, the community in. Uh, this, this is, this is a, you know, this is our, our uh, a very important um, commercial engine of, of our, of our town that we need to preserve. Um, and uh, this might uh, put undue pressure on the commercial um, uh, viability of the downtown, which has real structural issues. Uh, including traffic. So um, I, I, I would really love to have a, a much better picture of some of the details, so I can discern uh, uh, that um, we're not, we're not putting uh, the town in, in jeopardy. So there's, there's a, a lot to, lot to uncover here.
So I would give you the flip to that, the other way of saying the same thing. If you all, and it's on our website, um, if you take a look at the Affordable Housing Plan that the RTM approved, it discusses what parts of town have the infrastructure to support the Greenwich adding below market units. And when you come down to it, you need transit, you need sewer, you need water. And it is a very limited part of town that really has access to all of that. Now, Mr. Levy is raising the point, yes, down, um, Central Greenwich has been very successful post-COVID. Uh, it's bounced back. It, it managed during COVID. Uh, that's the one side of the, of the consideration, but the other one is if we are going to move forward on inclusion and addressing our need for affordable housing. Where are the best locations in town? And the answer in the Affordable Housing Plan is where we have infrastructure. And you're a little over half a mile from the train station. I think it's about, I don't know, six tenths of a mile. You're close to bus and there's sewer, town water. And uh, so the infrastructure is there and it's a balancing act that we talked about also with the number of units and the height of the building. Uh, we said to someone the other day, a different application, that we're finding our way on the best way, on the best approach to become more inclusive. So uh, we welcome your thoughts on these things. On, on, on these strategic considerations, because we don't know the answers right now. We're trying to find what preserves Greenwich and also advances sustainability and it's not easy. So your thoughts are very welcome and your input. Mr. Kuvik.
I just wanted to add one piece of information, which was um, we included all of the materials that we shared with the fire department in that meeting. Um, in, in our application, it's in the appendix. Um, you can see our diagrams and our code analysis um, for that if you wanted to review it.
Okay, you know, the thing is, it's their sign off that we, that we care about. You know, they say, yeah, we can work with this, but thank you. Yeah, I, we, we're looking for their sign off. Um, anything else from the commission? Alrighty, um, do you have any objection, Mr. Hasland, if I turn to the public for comment at this time?
No, not at all, I'm sure.
Does anybody in the public wish to speak on this application on Benedict? And again, this is uh, both the consolidation of twelve lots on Benedict Court and Benedict Place as well as the proposal to build a hundred and twenty units, of which forty-eight units would be priced below market. Um, I have a hand up in the panelists. That doesn't make sense. Does anybody in the public wish to speak on this application? Please raise your virtual hand. Not seeing anybody. Can that be? I'm not seeing anybody in the public who wishes to speak. Again, this is Benedict. All right, that's good. I, I, I did listen to comment on it last night at a, at a meeting, so uh, maybe they felt. But again, that, they understood the trade-offs. The most important thing, we discussed it with the Land Use Committee last night, and I think they understood the trade-offs that we're facing as a town. Uh, so with this, um, Mr. Hasland, it's up to you and Mr. Wharton. Um, to address all these open issues, Beta, uh, engineering especially. Patrick?
Uh, yeah, Chip, when, when was your meeting with Dave? When, when was your meeting with um, BPW?
Day.
Like tomorrow?
No, not, not Wednesday yet.
Next Wednesday, right, a week for tomorrow.
Okay, no, I just, just for scheduling purposes, that would most likely mean the first meeting in April, right?
Well, um, and really what I, I, one of the things that um, we have a best practice sharing group of, of P and Z chairs and what I, one of them was saying the last time we were talking was it's so valuable when folks come in with a lot of these issues resolved, because then we can, we can move on. So if the farther you can get on these big questions before you uh, would be very helpful before you come back. Um,
No, we thought we'd made significant uh,
Yeah.
The advancement on the sewer shoot and certainly fire and we, we um, the engineering, we, you know, we can just, a lot of it's smaller stuff that we can respond to.
Agreed, agreed. You know, little stuff like um, how you did the traffic counts and why the traffic, oh. That was another thing I wanted to remind you. So you did the traffic based on ITE for the existing, whereas um, you had, somebody asked you a question about why didn't you base it on actuals? The other thing that was essential in the traffic besides adding those two intersections, Saturday is a peak hour for the downtown. Saturday is mad. If you look at morning rush and you look at evening rush, you miss some of the worst congestion downtown. Uh, one of the people who knows the most about this is um, Craig Gray, Parking Services. So, because he tracks when he doesn't have any parking. So uh, Patrick can get his feel for it. If you can just give us a sense of what the, if you can look at what that is during the peak hours. Um, are you all planning to go to A R C on this?
Well, actually, Madam Chair, I don't know if you remember this, but uh, the last time we were before you on the pre-app, you said to us, don't go to A R C, we'll keep it with us and we'll go from there. Um,
So that's why I'm asking you, what are you thinking now? And what is the commission advising now? Um, you know, I always hesitate.
I would say, let's get the, let's get ourself satisfied before we run off to anybody else.
Okay, and the other thing is on an eight thirty G, at the end of the day, you know, we have a lot less call, a lot less ability to influence the outcome of the architecture. And I feel you've made the applicants making a genuine effort on the architecture, but we know that we have very limited statutory ability to affect the architecture. Mr. Leroy?
Yeah, Madam Chair, you had mentioned traffic. The studies that we have are related to parking occupancy, so I just want to make sure that we're not.
Um, The question that DPW raises, no, that's, yes. But parking occupancy, yes, I know it sounds weird when I say that, but parking occupancy and traffic have a strong relationship.
No, I, I, I agree. I just want to make sure that the data set that, you know, that's, we have
There's no parking because a lot of, yeah, but it's, yeah, so Craig, um, um, he's a deputy chief now, right? Deputy Chief Gray knows when people are downtown, because he knows when he doesn't have any parking. So it's close enough for them to have a ballpark sense of, without having them go through a lot of question asking. Of, are there issues that your project would create? Um, okay, anything else in the commission? No, so we would continue this application. And we're glad to see you anytime you want to come back and just whenever you feel like you've got far enough that we could move forward.
Super, thank you. And I, I didn't have a chance to thank Mr. Fingers uh, for appearing too.
Well, you can, you can, he's gone. I kicked him out. He wanted to be kicked out, so I kicked him out.
We appreciate that.
He said, I want to go eat, something like that. So he's gone, but um, if you, you know, you all reached out to him originally, so if you want to contact him.
So this, this uh, um, um, uh, final subdivision is a must decide, um, three twenty-five.
Oh yes, you need to give us the extension for that. I think you made it too soon. Unless you want us to decide it, and my guess was you did not.
Oh, on the subdivision, on the consolidation? No, 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 you're right. Madam Chair, we want that to track with the site plan approval.
Would you file? Thank you very much, Mr. Levy, because I had forgotten to mention that. Um, I didn't think you wanted us to decide the merger unless you knew you were going ahead with a site plan.
No, that's correct, yep.
So if you would kindly give the extension to Mr. Leroy, um, the best you can do to line it up is to take is to take both apps to four, to five twenty-four, because um, the, the site plan goes to six fifteen. Um, one thing I did wonder, and I'm just asking you guys this, this wasn't a must open until the eleventh of April, and I'm wondering if it would have been more effective with, for you all as the applicant, just to consider if you had had that extra month before we opened it. So you could resolve, go for, it gives you a month to get some of the stuff done. So give, give Patrick feedback on an ongoing basis, Mr. Hasland, on the must, and you know, should we be waiting when people have open issues?
We, we, um, you know, it's, it happens with the pre-app process, which I love for a lot of reasons.
We love it, yeah.
As you know, it doesn't, the plans don't get circulated to the various departments to comment on until you actually file for a final application. Um, and so there's a tendency, I think, even though we knew that that was going to happen and we were trying to do, work with all the departments and try to get as many issues as we could resolved in advance, and I think we were successful to a certain extent. Excuse me, nonetheless, you know, come Friday, we get their staff notes and realize, okay, there's a lot of things we still have to work on. But we still wanted to open and let you know we're working on it and go forward.
Just asking, just asking.
I mean, and we've been, we've been going down the path of, you know, trying to um, uh, deliver as many affordable units as we can and getting up to forty percent. Um, you know, required um, a, a lot of work and a, um, and it's the kind of thing that you do need a certain amount of scale to be able to reach up to forty percent. So we thought that the, the forty-eight affordable units, you know, was a priority from the commission and that's kind of the path we've gone down with the building and, and um, we hope that that's still the right path, because we do think it's a, an infill site. We with this last uh, partial that we got, um, there were no single family homes anywhere around us. The only residential use is a six-story building next to us and everything else is commercial office. And so we're not really, we're not really impacting then a neighborhood that um, is going to be concerned about density. Uh, three of our neighbors are uh, uh, surface parking lots. Um, so it's a, it's a place where we can create some, uh, create some affordable housing at a, at a very high rate. Um, and do it in a way that um, uh, takes advantage of the resources of, of Greenwich. Um, and I just hope that we're going down the wrong, I hope that we are not going down the wrong path in trying to um, to fulfill that mission, because that's really, we spent a lot of time with the design and with the neighbors um, to make sure that everyone, um, everyone's aware of what we're doing, of what we are doing and the scale of it. Um, and that's why you haven't heard, you know, a lot of objections from the neighbors, because we're really not having a, a negative impact on, on. Um, so I just wanted to put that out there, because I'm a little discouraged by this discussion.
No, no, don't be discouraged, Mr. Mr. Wharton. It is, um, it is an incredible struggle for a town. You've worked with lots of towns as a developer, I'm sure. We, on the one hand, we want to keep our community character. We want to keep the skit, the archi, by, I'm not supposed to say that. The architectural scale and the physical characteristics of our, of our town center. And we want to keep it feeling historic and smaller and not urban. And on the other, we have a desire to promote affordability. Uh, someone pointed out to me earlier today, just by has, by happenstance, that the governor's opening comment, when he did the state of the state address, was to talk about the need for more accessible housing in the state. And we've got those balls in the air and that's why, and we're juggling it and we're trying to balance it. And it's why I said to you before, we're all trying to find a solution together. Of what works best, how we do this. It's hard for us. Because if it was up to us, we'd have everybody in a three-story building. But we know that that isn't realistic under the eight thirty G statute. And that if we're going to work with it, we have to carve a path and to balance it. Um, I don't know, I mean, I would say, don't get discouraged. If you were us, you'd be saying all the same stuff. You'd be saying, wow. My great aunt Suzie, you know, loves the traditional feel or whatever you. Um, so that, I mean, and that's the, that's the thing. Right now, um, as of year end, I just pulled up the numbers. Right now Greenwich has almost six percent affordable housing, five point seven percent. We have one thousand four hundred and seventy-two total units. Forty-eight units is a dent, makes a big difference. So, um, and we know that. And again, we come back to where do we have the infrastructure? And where can we show that, that we're inclusive and how do we do it? So we're balancing something and if we So we're balancing something and if we, we're not, we're trying to do what's right for our town.
I understand, and I understand that the. Well, it's a very, it's a very blunt instrument. Yeah, well, you know, it's uh, um, it's a question of where, where's the best place to create that density? And I don't know, you know, I, I've seen, I've, I've watched the progress of a lot of the other projects and eight dash thirty G is a very blunt instrument. And, you know, in theory, you could build a fifty story building next to a single family home. That's crazy. But I would have, we were hoping that this uh, this project and where it's located would even get by on its merits, even if we didn't have eight thirty G. This is a, this is a six story building next to other six story buildings. It has a historic character. That's why we have B K S K on that their specialty. Um, so we wanted to make it look like it's always been there. Um, and so we try to be very respectful of that. Mr. Kubik is a, is a Greenwich resident. So he, he knew from the beginning what we wanted to create. Uh, and so, you know, I just uh, you know, we've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars to get to where we are. And we thought that um, we had covered the, most of the bases. We have some questions to answer that we got on Friday, but, but really, um, is this a, you know, is this the right place? Um, for Greenwich to say, we, we're not against everything, that certain projects by their location and by the, and by the design. Um, are, are worth approving.
Before Mr. Levy speaks, you know, they don't call Connecticut the land of steady habits for nothing. It is, we cling, it's hard. We cling to the architectural. You listen to us. I didn't want to give up the Gothic facade on a funeral home. Mr. Levy, go ahead.
Yes, I, I did want to also reiterate that I think that the um, the renderings show. Uh, a, a real, a marvelous attempt to create character and streetscape. Um, and uh, i- in that regard, there's only so much you can do when you have such a, 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 uh, these, oh, uh, power, these. You know, your, your project is uh, just simply overpowering the other structures around it. And uh, the downtown, so it's a, it's a delicate balance. But what you've done is, is commendable. Uh, it's, it's just. It, it, but nonetheless, when you're building something that's twice the height of everything um around it and, and. Uh, it belies the character um of what it is that we love about our town. So it's a, you, you put us in a difficult position.
And, and no, the state put us in a difficult position and, you know, if, if we had it, you know, if we had it our way.
Well, the applicant didn't have to come in and eight thirty G.
No, but we had, actually, we denied the non eight thirty G. Um, so.
Maybe what we have is.
Could we just say, I think we should just have some, not, not have the misinformation go out on, because this is a public hearing. It's not, it's not twice the size of the buildings that are around it. It's just not true. It's a, there's a six story apartment building next to us and a seven story office building behind us.
No, but.
It's just not true.
I understand, but you missed the, 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 the real gist of what we're trying to do here. Where, where you're taking um, the anomalies in town, those things which uh, don't fit in and saying, well, we'll just match that. We're looking at the entirety of, of the streetscape. And uh, if everything was this height, we wouldn't be uh, having this discussion. But the vast majority um of the downtown area and all of Greenwich. Is at a much different scale than this. So I appreciate what you're saying, but it, it belies the point that we're trying to make here. So it, it's, it, it really, you're talking to, it's two ships uh, uh, passing in the night of your comment. Uh, if you want to address our comment, then you say, well, we understand that the, the uh, uh, this is uh. This density is different and we're, the whole idea that we're trying to um, manage is the need for housing versus. Um, preserving something that we think is um, important to our town and is the reason why we live here.
I think we understand uh, coming from Mr. Levy. And, and the need to preserve Greenwich and the character of Greenwich, I understand it, and that's what the commission is interested in doing. I think that uh, Phil was only making mention of the fact that I think your comment that this is uh, twice as tall as anything around it. Was not accurate. And we, if you want to do a site visit, we'd be more than happy to do that, to point out the surrounding buildings that are commercial. Um, or multifamily uh, and six, seven stories high.
I understand that, but our intent is not to duplicate that.
Thank you.
All right. So on the next time you can mention how many buildings are similar or something like that, but.
Well, we actually have that in our packet too. If you look, there's.
Oh, I didn't, okay. I didn't remember that. I missed it. I'm so sorry. I will find it again. Okay, so we'll see you guys when you come back. You're gonna work, work stuff and we look forward to seeing you.
Great, thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much.
Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Alrighty. Okay, so it's six forty almost. Um, you guys want to move along, keep going? Yeah, right? Yes?
Yes.
Okey dokey. All right, so our next application is, uh, oh, wait, why don't we wait for the applicant? Um, who is that?
I thought it was Mr. DeAndrea. Um.
I've seen him in the room. There he is, alrighty.
He was in A, he's not T's, that's why.
Yeah, he should be D for DeAndrea. So our next applicant, oh, there he is. Our next application is Susan Satter for a final site plan and special permit. To construct dormers on an existing garage in a pool cabana structure. Uh, which would further exceed a hundred and fifty thousand cubic feet. It's four hundred and fourteen Roundhill Road. And Mr. DeAndrea, hello, and why don't you go ahead? And again, seated on this application is Mr. Wells for Mr. Yaski plus the regulars.
All set?
Yes.
Good evening, good evening.
Hear you and see you.
Thank you.
Look at you, an engineer conquers technology. We could write the book.
Yeah, thank you for whatever you said. Um, I hope. I have been sitting, sitting quietly, listening to um, the conversation, so I was um, ready to, to sign on. This is going to be very brief, I hope. Uh, I represent Susan Satter, who is the owner of four fourteen Roundhill Road. She has a beautiful property that they maintain extremely well. Back in February of twenty one, we did receive, receive approval to add a dormer to a garage. That was under P L P Z twenty three sixty three. At that time, there were um seventeen thousand six hundred and sixty four square feet on the property, which is less than the allowable. Um, in that zone on the six point four acres that they own. Um, the dormer was not constructed and more recently, um, Mrs. Satter decided that she wanted to create some symmetry on the garage. And add a um, open structure uh, um, pool house with a small bathroom, just a powder room, basically toilet and sink. And that would be around the pool, um, which is centered in the property. So at the end of the day, the construction of the dormers in the garage. Um, three on the uh, westerly side and one on the easterly side to match one that's already there would add a hundred and thirty two square feet to the um, to the property. In addition, the bathroom in the um, open sided pool house or gazebo um, would add seventy eight square feet. So that would bring the total square feet on the property to seventeen thousand eight hundred and seventy four square feet, where the allowable. In the prop, on the property in the R A four zone would be eighteen thousand and eighty square feet. That leaves them two hundred and six square feet to do another dormer sometime, which they don't um, plan to do at this time. Now, we do have an I W W A green sheet sign off, no application necessary. One of the primary um, elements of this property is a magnificent um, large beech tree. That the owners spend thousands of dollars according to the property manager um, and in caring for that tree. I mentioned that simply because there is landscaping all around the perimeter. There are specimen trees everywhere. And the focal point is the um, the beech tree. So we are not intending to add any more trees. It's not necessary. A runoff from the um, pool house, um, open sided structure, I keep mentioning that, just an open gazebo. Um, will be directed to um, an existing drainage system that they put into the ground. Couple of years ago, just to be prepared if they were ever going to do a pool house. I can tell you that it's way oversized. There are twenty four three thirty X L galleries, which are three feet deep. There's more than enough storage to handle the runoff from the extra six hundred square feet of roof area. Um, um, assist, um, what do you call it? Associated with construction of the pool. So in closing, we are here for a special permit and site plan, simply because we are well over a hundred and fifty thousand cubic feet, which is the threshold for the. Um, for the um, special permit. Um, but everything about the property is in complete compliance with the applicable zoning criteria. Or floor area and drainage and wetlands, or therefore I would respectfully request an approval.
Does anybody in the commission have questions or comments on this application?
Yeah, I, I had one. Uh, Mr. DeAndrea, could you comment, is the uh, pool heated and if so, by what means?
I am not prepared to answer that question, sir.
Okay, that's fine.
But I would, I would imagine that it is, but I don't know. I didn't know that that would be a question.
That's fine. Thank you.
Anybody else? No. Does anybody from the public have any questions or comments on this application? Again, this application is Susan Satter at four fourteen Roundhill Road for an addition of dormer. Seeing no comments from the public, and does the commission have any objection to closing this application at this time?
No objection.
This application is hereby closed.
Thank you very much.
Bye, Mr. DeAndrea.
Good evening.
All right, and the next application uh, is um, who is representing the applicant?
S E minor.
Yep, I see, I see.
This is a forty Ridge View, correct?
Yeah.
Yes, we uh, we got a post.
Yep, right.
All right, I'll announce it. Yeah, um, the applicants complained that if I announce it and they're being promoted, they don't hear what we say. So I wait till they're in the meeting.
Oh, Mr. McRae is asking about the number ten.
Okay.
Just confirming that number ten's not going for it.
Eleven, but that's okay.
Eleven, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Alrighty, um, our next application is number twelve. Catherine and Brett Stefieri for a final re subdivision to divide forty Ridge View Avenue and zero Ridge View Avenue. In the R A one zone. And um, if you would go ahead, ma'am.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, Rachel Orsi from S E Minor for the applicant. Um, just letting you know, we were present yesterday during the commission hearing uh, and have noted the um, concerns from the commission. So we are here tonight to help um, hopefully address any other uh, questions the commission may have. But we understand that we have some outstanding D P W comments to address, um, as well as some other items to uh, look into. Such as the location of the conservation easement on site, um, as well as uh, being able to under uh. Describe uh, how we've considered the steep slopes uh, into our proposed development.
And what we'd like to do is to have you um, to, to have, and one of the things that came up is if you laid it out differently, could you work differently with the slopes? Most importantly, where you have the easement, can you, can you place the easement so that you preserve existing natural topography and trees? Uh, one of the comments that conservation made is that it looks as, it looks like there is an enormous amount of regrading necessary. Uh, in order to accomplish the development that you propose and can you, can you do something that is more sustainably oriented?
Understood.
Anything else? That was a great opening, Miss Orsi. Um, anything else from the commission? All right, does anybody from the public wish to comment on this application? Oh, sorry, Mr. Levy, go ahead.
Uh, sorry about that. I, I just wanted to uh, raise some concerns that uh, uh, we've gotten. Uh, from neighbors about drainage. Um, people are very concerned about um. Uh, runoff and um. Um, I'll leave it at that. Do you have any comments?
Um, there, go ahead, uh, Miss Orsi, they are.
Okay, um, I would say that uh, our engineering team is working to um, design uh, drainage to meet both town regulations as well as all of the concerns raised by D P W. Um, and I'm not sure, I don't believe we have seen or received any comments from the public. But um, if, if we're able to take a look and hopefully address any concerns raised, uh, we would, we would definitely look into that.
So another, you have not talked with uh, any neighbors, is that correct?
We, no, we have not been, that's correct. We've not been approached by any, any neighbors or received any outside comment.
Okay, so um, uh, but you wouldn't mind uh, reaching out to the neighbors?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Patrick, I'm not seeing neighbor comments.
Thank you, ma'am chair. I was just going through the staff report because I don't recall any either, so.
I'm not seeing any neighbor comments in any of. I'm looking, I'm going through the folder right now and um, darn.
I, I've been talked to by neighbors.
Ah, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I, if you said that, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no.
It sounded like you were responding to something in writing, Mr. Levy. I apologize.
All right, um, so if you would, Mr. Levy, the next time that comes up, give them Patrick's email address. And tell them to send the comments and so the whole commission can see them because, you know, um, it, it is uh, that way we've seen them. We know what the concerns are, but I think if you could just, just tell them that um, it's pending before you and to please send your comment into. Mr. LaRoe so that the whole commission can see it.
I think they may be in the audience, madam chair. I see some hands up now.
Ah, okay. I asked for comment and nobody commented, but now they've raised their hands. Okay, Mr. McRae, while I let somebody in, I've got three people in. Awesome, four people to let in. Okay.
Miss Orsi, just a quick question. The grading around the proposed house is mostly around the pool. And they're creating drainage swells? Is, is that what I'm seeing?
Um, would we be able to uh, share the screen just so I can understand which part of the site we'd be referring to?
This would be uh, around, this would be drawing uh, where'd it go? Actually, you actually do that drawing. This would be uh, the L I D plan page five. Uh, let me see if I can find the number in the staff report. But I'm just trying to get a handle on, on uh, on the grading. It a lot, it's, it's behind, it's around the pool of the proposed residence in the front on lot one. And most of the grading actually for lot two is actually to provide for the driveway to lot two, a new driveway to lot two?
Hmm.
Okay.
All right.
Yes, uh, the, the site has some very difficult topography um, to work with. So I know in regards to, to the slopes, at least for the back lot, um, the goal for, for the existing house was to rework, you know, the driveway. Um, so that's where a lot of the grading comes into play and then um, just taking a look at this plan. Yeah, and you were saying, you were mentioning the, the regrading around the pool.
Yeah, so I, I'm seeing just a little bit of regrading, more like drainage swells around the pool. And most of the other grading is the driveway to lot two. I'm just, let me try, I'm reading that correctly.
Mr. McRae, what page again? I'm sorry, I.
On the staff report, it would be, your best bet would be um.
I want to say eighty eight?
Yes, page eighty eight.
So.
So in it, I just kind of want to get a sense, because we're talking about the topography. The front house is kind of built into the lot, except for the pool, which is higher, which has some drainage swelling around it. And the driveway for the existing house that's remaining. Is new, but it's being graded in such a way to beat the profiles to get up the driveway to the new, the old house. I just wanted to get confirmation on that.
Yes, I believe.
Right, so one other thing that popped up in the briefing, yeah, that's good. Um, I guess there's uh, some existing stone walls out there.
Hmm.
I, I guess as I see it, the new driveway goes, goes through the stone wall and back out. I guess as I see it, the new driveway goes, goes through the stone wall and back out through the stone wall. Would you consider actually just breaching the stone wall to allow for the driveway to go through, leave the remainder there?
Well, the other thing we talked about, Mr. McRae, is that they represent in that they only have, that they're only going to have the single curb cut, but they, and then they have a plan for two curb cuts. So I was assuming that Ms. Orsi was going to address that when they come back to us, that they're going to go back to one.
I, I can actually address that now, if that's okay. We're, the proposed site plan is for two curb cuts. Actually, I had connected with staff. I'm not sure how an old version of the narrative, of a template narrative got included. Looked in the submission materials for what we had submitted from our office and what we had submitted to the applications coordinator had clearly stated existing curb cut to remain and there's a new curb cut, so I, I do apologize for that confusion, but I'm not sure how that got in there.
All right, well, we would love to have one curb cut.
Right, Ms. Orsi, I think it was that you were going to establish a new curb cut with a lot in the front.
Correct.
And you were going to use the old curb cut for the lot in the back, but that's actually technically in the front yard of the other resident, of the new residents.
Correct.
What we had anticipated or thought would be a better bet was for the existing house following the the accessway and putting a new curb cut onto Ridgeview there. So in a sense, you'd actually have two new curb cuts. That way you're not going, you know, off the property, down the accessway, back on the property and then out again.
Understood.
Kind of confusing geometry where you could basically just go right down the accessway to the street and call it a day.
Yes, and that, that was the initial goal. Obviously, we would, we would love to have a more clean-cut site plan. Unfortunately, I believe the grading or the topography in that corner is not friendly enough to to develop a driveway that connects straight down from the accessway, which is why that, that interesting corner or the curve of the driveway is proposed here. But we, we were hoping to use an existing curb cut, so that way we didn't have to abandon the existing and create two brand-new ones. We were trying to preserve what was already there. And then also just to speak back to the, the wall that's existing on site. After hearing the briefing yesterday and the, the idea of adjusting the conservation easement area to be more friendly to the existing foliage on site, we were actually thought we could repurpose the stone wall rocks that have been removed for the proposed new driveway and repurposing them into a a dry-laid, almost demarcation feature for the conservation easement on site. So those, those stone, those rocks would still be on site, but just repurposed in a, in a new way. And in a, in a beneficial way by, by keeping, you know, homeowners out of the conservation easement area.
Okay, would rather see you, would rather see you keep, if you could keep a portion of the stone wall, if you can stay with a single driveway, if you could make an effort on the development, if there's a way you can go to a single driveway. The first goal is to is to increase the sustainability of the development. Mr. McRae, go ahead, sir.
Right, the, the stones that you were going to retain, those would just be where the driveway breaches the wall? Or are you intending to take the whole wall down?
I can confirm, at the minimum, it would be where, where the driveway would, would breach the wall.
Okay, great, thank you.
Alrighty, our first, our first speaker is Jay Gibbons, followed by Karen Fessoliotis and then Tim Bustler and then Jonathan Simone. If you would go ahead and unmute, Mr. Gibbons.
Hi, my name is Jay Gibbons. I am a hi, thanks for, thanks for taking my questions or comments. I am a butter of this, this proposed project. And on Seven Parsonage Lane, my property actually extends down to Ridgeview. And I, I have a lot of concerns about this project. You know, first of all, there, there is a deed restriction that they're using to create a flag lot here, which I, I, I think is you know, skirting some issues there. I don't, I don't love that. I, I, I think this, this rock wall that we're talking about is over a hundred years old. I'd be really upset if that, if it was removed. I, I, I think importantly, this is being put into a side of a hill that is terrible topography and you're going to create basically a canyon of, of, on Ridgeview. We've already approved, you've already approved a pool house just up the street from here that has got to be thirty, forty feet high at its peak from, from Ridgeview. This is going to be the same thing. It's, it's really going to change the nature and the quality of, of Ridgeview Avenue. I, I'm concerned if, if these neighbors increase the grading. The neighbor that just put the pool house in has increased his grading, so now I have water inflow into my property despite, you know, you know, a, a water plan that says it wouldn't. If these people increase their grading, I'm going to get more water. This used to be, you know, three properties of pure woods and now we're going to have another property in there. And lastly and most importantly, and this is, and my other neighbors will address this issue, the flooding issue down on Echo and Ridgebrook is, is, is catastrophic. And this is only going to completely exacerbate that issue. I, I, I know they have a flood plan that's a hundred and thirty-eight, drainage plan is a hundred and thirty pages long. I don't see how adding hardscapes in here is gonna, is gonna help this or, or gonna move the water. It's going to be a real problem for the people down on Ridgebrook and Echo. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gibbons. Please come back when they return with the modifications that they're going to make. We'd like to, and I hope that you have a chance to review what they do. Our next speaker is Karen, I'm sorry, somebody, okay, Karen Fessoliotis. Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon, good evening. Evening, isn't it?
It's evening, yes, it's almost dinner time.
Losing track of time here. I grew up in the house located at sixty-two Ridgeview Avenue on property that was subdivided in nineteen sixty-six into a lot of approximately two and a half acres and a backlot of three acres. The houses on either side of sixty-two Ridgeview are well over three acres. This area has a history of preferring upzoning to the larger resulting properties in the RA one zone rather than subdividing it into small lot sizes. So I ask that you take that into consideration when you're considering this project. This neighborhood has also had a long history of maintaining the existing character of the neighborhood. The trees, the stone walls, single driveways. When Mrs. Thompson, who owned the large parcel of property from the top of Ridgeview almost to Ridgebrook passed away, the houses that were ultimately built, with the exception of the property ironically that was deeded to the Audubon and subsequently sold, were all designed to preserve the land in as natural estate as possible. The plan that I'm seeing here tonight is a departure from that. Importantly, the stone wall on this site is over a hundred years old and is in the, in face of destruction, at least partly. You know, the P O C D also wants you to preserve the place and character of the neighborhood. And this certainly would not be in keeping with the P O C D. The grading is of extreme concern, obviously. And my neighbors at the bottom, or my, my mother's neighbors, I consider this still my home, and I'm actually sitting in sixty-two Ridgeview right now. You know, the, the neighbors down the block from us have had, you know, to the point where some people are still not in their, back in their homes due to recent flooding. So I think that, you know, there's needs to be some heightened scrutiny by P and Z on not only the proposed retaining walls because of the grade, but the stormwater drainage requirements and the impact to the neighborhood, which is known to be flooded consistently in the, you know, by West Brother Brook and other things that, that are downstream from, from this proposed structure. So those are the concerns that I know my mother has and she's asked me to convey this to you on her behalf. And, you know, that, that we hope are addressed before you approve this.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Fessoliotis. Eric Mertz is next and then Jonathan Simone.
Yeah, hi, I'm, I'm Eric Mertz. You know, I wasn't going to speak, but I mean, talking to Jay, just seeing the presentation. I live behind the property and my only, I, I really don't know whether it'd be positive or negative for the neighborhood. But I do notice there's some drainage flow coming off my property because I'm a little bit higher up. So what happens when water flows down, it flows into the back of that Ridgewood property. So I mean, I, I think you just got to account for, you know, all this water flow that occurs. Again, I have no positive or negative comments. I don't know much about the, the architecture and all that. But I just want to pass the group that there is a water flow coming off my property into the backside of whatever is, is happening here.
I bet today was a good day for that.
Yeah, right, I mean.
Wish I'd known, I would have gone out there earlier today when the heavens opened up. Okay, but thank you for that.
Right.
It was a good time to visit, would have been today.
Yeah, just check, check it out as you look at this whole thing, okay? Thank you.
Sunday not so great.
Yeah, right?
Thank you very much. So Jonathan Simone is next, followed by, I'm sorry I hadn't promoted you yet, followed by Tim Bustler. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mertz. And Mr. Simone, if you would, oh, he's not in yet. There he is, Mr. Simone, you're, you just muted yourself, so undo that. You were unmuted. There you go, you're all set. And then Tim Bustler will follow you.
Hello, everybody. Hey, apologies, it took me a minute to get into the meeting here.
Oh, sometimes it's slow. It's not you, it's people disappear into the, like, cyberland.
I got bad writing, apologies. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'd just like to, you know, repeat what Mr. Gibbons said earlier. Yeah, I live on the corner of, of Echo Lane and Ridgeview and, you know, we've had some substantial flooding in the last several years, starting with Hurricane Ida, I'm sure you know well enough. As it pertains to forty Ridgeview, you know, I'm friends with the staff area, so I certainly don't want to make any trouble for anybody with regards to the project. But I'd like to take the opportunity to bring to light the fact that none of the infrastructure around drainage in our neighborhood, especially on Echo Lane, which is where we really saw the substantial flooding, you know, three years ago and since, handedly, every storm, you know, I think all of us are kind of chewing our fingernails. The, the infrastructure, the, the drainage systems, the pipes, the waterways, culverts and so forth. And, you know, I know there's a broader project, you know, with, with regards to the North Street Bridge underway, but none of that infrastructure has been updated in the last fifty, seventy-five years. And there's been a substantial amount of new construction built uphill from us. And so more and more water is being pushed into our neighborhood with each project that's completed. And my neighbor Tim can speak to this probably a little more intelligently than I can. But, you know, the fact is, our neighborhood can't handle the amount of runoff that it's getting currently. And so, you know, with each project that breaks the ratio permeable, permeable to impermeable soil, you know, we get more and more water that we can't, it's already, it's, it's on top of an already full glass. And so, you know, our basements are flooding, backyards are flooding, you know, it's, it's it's a substantial problem for everybody who lives in this neighborhood. And so I just, I hope that all of that is being taken into consideration with any new projects that are being built in this, in this neighborhood or, or proposed in this neighborhood, simply, you know, you know, just taking into account the fact that the infrastructure here can't handle the amount of water we're getting currently. So, you know, if, if we're going to be pushing more water into these streets, something needs to be done about the the drainage infrastructure currently.
And what was your address again?
Twenty-two Echo Lane.
So you're on Echo, okay. Yeah, and you're back on to Ridgewood. No, I was just looking at it on the map and then I didn't remember your address. Okay, got it. Okay. Thank you very much, sir. Mr. McRae, did you have a question for Mr. Simone?
Actually, for the applicant.
Okay, Mr. Simone, thank you very much. And then Mr. Bustler, as soon as Mr. McRae is done, we'll go to you. Go ahead.
Ms. Orsi, the, the drainage plan for the drivers and everything, does that have an outflow to the public drainage catch basin or anything, or is it all retained on site?
That is a fantastic question. I can verify. I don't know off the top of my head. I'd have to refer to the project engineer for that.
Okay. I had another question and now I completely forgot what it was. Oh.
We'll still be here.
You're designing, you've designed to the hundred year flood?
We are maintaining peak flow runoffs through, through the twenty-five year, which is the town regulation.
Okay, engineering, I lost that page, recommends a hundred year flood?
If those are on the comments that we just received, I know we're working, we're already in process of addressing all of the concerns raised by DPW.
Right, this would have been, where is the date? Three, three one?
Yes, the we received on Friday.
Right, okay, so it's, it's talking about it contributes to the West Branch of the Brothers Brook, those proposals would be peak runoff discharge reduction up to and including the hundred year storm event. So I think that's actually probably the thing that may make a lot of people comfortable, that's going to handle kind of a deluge like today. Okay, thank you very much.
Today wasn't even that bad as some of the, I mean, we've lived the Echo thing. Mr. Bustler, if you would go ahead. And you're on Echo as well, right?
Yes, good evening. I'm Tim Bustler. I live across Echo Lane from John Simone. We both are at the corners of Ridgeview and Echo Lane. We lived through the storm two and a half years ago.
Oh, yeah.
In September, when Hurricane Ida brought, brought significant rainfall to the area. So when we hear DPW or C D M Smith talk about hydrological studies with the hundred year, the twenty-five year, what have you, that's, that, that, that's, that's, that's all irrelevant to us because we lived through feet of water that came down Ridgeview and flooded our homes. It wasn't eight inches of rain, rainfall that put two or three feet of water in my home or three or four feet of water in John Simone's home or that caused eight of our neighbors on Echo Lane to have to evacuate and rebuild their homes. One of which is still not habit, uh, and re-inhabited. And this is not rainfall that created this, it's the downflow, the runoff from uphill homes. And it's not the fault of the homeowners whose contractors and engineers follow the town regulations. It's the neglect of drainage infrastructure that homes are in constant development above us. There's one recently permitted now on Parsonage. There's one at the top of Ridgeview, right near the intersection with Parsonage. There was a pool house that was just built on the property uphill from forty. And now we find out that forty Ridgebrook in an area that's full of, full of multi-acre properties. I respect that it's, it's zoned RA one. But in a neighborhood that has a history of upzoning, taking a small lot and adding it on to a sub-two acre lot to reach two acres, to then subdivide it, to add another driveway, to build a retaining wall to hold back what could be thirty feet in elevation. This is bringing, that's going to hold back, there's a pond just above this property. There's so much water being retained by these culsacks that are holding bits of water. When it rains, those overflow and even more water comes down to us. So the point that I'd like to make to you is that the flooding that we experienced was so severe that the North Street Bridge, at the low point of North Street by Cotswold, had the footings moved six feet such that the, the state of Connecticut now has to rebuild that. And that bridge, you don't think of it as a bridge because you don't know that you're going over water, but the reason is not much water can flow under it. The capacity flow underneath Ridgebrook needs to be increased. And when the B E T approved conditionally, the release of state funds to rebuild the North Street Bridge, at some point later this year, this project will start. They put four conditions on that. They started with about fifteen, but finally unanimously approved four conditions. The most important of which is that there's a community public hearing that involves many services, including Nathaniel Witherell, which is uphill, including EMS and the police and the fire department. uh, many services, including Nathaniel Witherell, which is uphill, including EMS and the police and the fire department and all the schools that run buses through this area. That that construction project, not only will it take North Street down to a single lane for eighteen plus months, but the drainage situation needs to be improved. Because if the water is not able to flow in a controlled manner from these homes up above us, up on Ridgeview, unhusted, and move through what is a, an unserviced, unmaintained creek that wraps around from Ridgeview across Andrews, down through uh, the GA, uh, uh, grass field to get under this bridge, our neighborhood is going to become a watershed. And so the people who live just above forty Ridgebrook may not see this as a grave concern because it's their water that trickles down to them. But when, if you had walked up on September first of twenty-twenty-one, which I tried to do to get up to Mrs. Fassalot's house to check on her when the lights were out and the power was down, I couldn't walk up to forty Ridgeview, which is only about three hundred yards above my house, walking up Ridgeview because there was knee-deep water flowing down against me. And I'm concerned that this property is going to exacerbate that. And I think that what really needs to be done is whenever these developments are done, and certainly when something is subdivided, which takes away permeable surfaces and increases the, the flow, that DPW has got to do something in conjunction with the Flood Erosion Control Board to advance projects that are going to address a severe, long-time existing infrastructure neglect. And there is no runoff that, 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 that can be managed by the existing system. And if projects like this are going to be approved and engineers are going to be hired by people so that they can maximize the value of their property, well, that's capitalism and I, I'm not opposed to that. But you have to recognize that there are many, many homes in this area that are going to encounter significant threat and flooding. And it's happened just two and a half years ago. Not every hundred years. I know that's the hydrological study, but it could happen again next September.
Right, because the hundred year storm can happen two years in a row. You know, it, nothing, nothing says it can't. And Ida was something else. Uh, we all lived what we're all very aware of what you experienced in the, in that neighborhood.
Yeah, so I mean, it's a safety issue in the sense that we've got this traffic concern that's going to happen over the next, say, two years when the North Street Bridge gets redone. We've got multiple construction projects in our area already. Um, I mean, I don't really want to go to war with my neighbors. I'm on this call. I'm not a butt in this property, but I'm trying to work with DPW and Flood Erosion Control Board and Inland Waterways. Um, and, you know, I've developed a pretty good rapport with Aubrey Mead and with Fred Camillo, and we're trying to make some progress. But it's incredibly hard to overcome what's clearly been, you know, thirty-plus years of just projects that don't get moved forward. Um, it's incredibly frustrating to realize that there are some simple things that could be done, but no one pays attention to it. But what we do see is the permitting of prod- projects that have engineering requirements and, and plans. And those plans are sometimes not even submitted until after there's uh, a certificate of occupancy given to these sums. Sometimes engineering doesn't even get these.
Mr. Busler. Mr. Busler, thank you. You know, one thing is, uh, we just got a report from the region, from our western, southern, southwest Connecticut region. And they gave us some recommendations for changes in zoning regulations for, it's for the future, of course, but setbacks from more, from not letting people build too close to wa- to water bodies. So it's one thing. It's a ninety-one page report. Um, it's on the West Cog website, if you want to look at it. Um, but, uh, we're actively going to look at that because it's been on our to-do list from the P O C D and given the fact that we've seen some bad damage from storms. The problem is that we're mostly developed. You have some exceptions, but what do you do about the sites that already exist? Um, so come back when SC Minor comes back with the changes so that we can look at, we're, we're going to look at whether, and we're very cognizant of your neighborhood.
Thank you. I'd just like to add one thing on behalf of my neighbor Leslie Tarkington. She had just
We know her too.
Just above Leslie, um, on Joffren, it was a house that we looked at about nine years ago before, before we, we, we moved from the um, the east side of town to, to, to be closer to the center of town. Um, we looked at that as big hill, great big trees on it. Um, and what happened to that property is when it, when it changed hands, um, the hill was sort of controlled with, with a number of very large retaining walls. And those retaining walls suffered a lot of stress from that Ida rain. But more importantly, it continued to suffer distress. And Leslie told me, she goes, look, they're going to build retaining walls at forty Ridgebrook. The retaining walls just above me fell down. So when those walls fall down and you're just a victim down below it. So I would just encourage you to look at, you know, if you're
And ask, and, and ask those friends of yours on the BET to fund stuff, okay?
We're working on it.
All right, because we need more funding for infrastructure. I know they're trying. They have a big job. Thank you very much, Mr. Busler. All right, uh, folks, uh, Ms. Orsi, I think you've got a bigger job cut out for you than you realized. Uh, so, uh, we will um, leave you to work on this. It would be good if you could talk to people in the neighborhood. It sounds like you're going to encounter a lot of frustration. So we will continue this application. And it is now seven sixteen PM. And the commission is going to take a dinner break for twenty minutes and we will come back at seven thirty-six PM. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Brent Hill. Nope, he went away. Brent Hill is representing Neighbor to Neighbor, is that correct? That's who signed the letter I'm looking at. So yes, okay.
Oh, shoot. Good, hello, good evening.
Hello, so our next application is a discussion item for Neighbor to Neighbor. Uh, it's a pre-application review. And the request is to change hours of operation increased by an hour on Monday through Saturday with starting earlier uh, in the morning by half an hour and closing at one PM instead of twelve-thirty. In the afternoons, add a, on Wednesdays, add a shift from three-thirty to five-thirty PM. Add a sec, a second, another day for garbage pickup. Uh, on Monday through Saturday, they currently only have two. And finally requesting the lights out to be at seven-thirty PM instead of six PM, three times a month, so that the applicant may have, uh, board meetings and, um, community meetings. Hello, Mr. Hill.
Hello, good evening.
So with that, uh, Mr. Low and Mr. Levy, everybody's here, right? Okay, so
I'm here. I'm just, I'm just chewing a little bit.
Gave your story for you. Uh, you have had queuing. So why don't you go ahead and give us the background and I will stop talking.
Yes, so thank you so much for this opportunity. So we've had an increase of sixteen percent of our clients in the last year. And, uh, just to try to help alleviate some of the bottlenecks early in the morning to allow families to get in earlier and, uh, get their kids off to school at eight AM. And also to add that Wednesday, uh, which traditionally, uh, Neighbor to Neighbor has always had a Wednesday and a Thursday evening. And we would like to go back to that just to accommodate our clientele.
Okay. You mentioned, and, and the commission asked this yesterday, you mentioned that you've had an increase too. What do you attribute that increase?
Uh, that the, uh, support that the federal government was giving during the pandemic, a lot of those resources are no longer around. So a lot of people are, uh, once again struggling to make ends meet.
Thank you for telling us that. Okay, any questions from the commission on this? Ms. Jenkins.
Uh, yes, not really a question, but just, uh, a thank you on behalf of the community for the wonderful work that you do. Um, and it, it's a shame that more people need you, but it's great that you're there for them. So thank you, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Mary, for that. Anybody else have questions?
Ma- Madam Chair, maybe I'll just brush the subject.
Yeah.
But have you gotten any feedback from your neighbors?
Uh, yes, we did send the letters out. I received a letter from Putnam Hill, uh, from their, uh, association president who said they're in favor. Uh, they support our, uh, application to P and Z. Also, of course, the church, Christ Church, they sent a letter of support. And, um, we did receive a letter from Putnam Park. And they did question us about some drainage issues, which are, uh, building, um, our builder came by. He consulted with our engineer, Soundview of Greenwich. And they, um, their assertion is that, uh, our driveway is permeable, that we, um, followed all the regulations, the system was designed to specs and approved by the town. And they think that Putnam Park should investigate their gutter system because apparently they just have runoff from their gutters, but, um, they determined that nothing was coming from our property.
Okay, so the question
Oh, and I'm sorry, and one, one other email I received from a resident of Putnam Park just thanking us for the great work and said that she fully supports our application to, uh, P and Z.
So Patrick, you had heard from um, Putnam Park regarding the flooding and there was something about a pipe that was in a weep hole.
Yeah, there was a, there's a there's a retaining wall that, uh, levels out the parking area to the rear of Neighbor to Neighbor. There was assertion from the neighborhood that water was coming out of that pipe uh, during storm events. Uh, we had asked, uh, Mr. Hill, and, uh, I believe, uh, you, you're still working with Soundview, correct?
Yes.
Engineer. Yeah, uh, so Mr. Smarslack, we had contacted them about our concerns and, and DPW had given them, uh, just instructions as to what investigation they would like to get back uh, so that they can rule out what, you know, what may be the cause or if there is any contributing causes. Um, uh, I, I, from what I've heard, I've not heard back from Mr. Smarslack or, so, uh, whereas DPW was contacted and I'm not aware, but I think we do need to regroup and, and talk about that just so we can address or just put that issue to bed if it is addressed, so.
We would very much like that, um.
Particularly if you're going to come back with the site plan application, it's going to obviously be an issue that they're going to be interested in having an answer to, so.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. McRae?
Uh, Mr. Hill, um, you're looking for an extension of the lights out for your board meetings. Can you define what a community meeting is? What, what do you intend by that?
Yes, so we partner with a number of social service agencies in the town. For example, uh, Food Rescue held their very first board meeting, their very first in-person board meeting at Neighbor to Neighbor a few months ago, uh, in the post-pandemic for them. So we definitely partner with other agencies. And so if any other community group needs a space to meet, we will provide that for them.
Okay, so they're, they're actually outside groups, not specific Neighbor to Neighbor groups?
That's correct. The board meeting, of course, will be once a month. Those other two days will be open, available for any other community groups.
Okay, and the garbage pickup is for recycling of boxes only, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, um, the, um, afternoon shift of when, on Wednesday, three to five-thirty, how does that work in terms of the rest of the, uh? This is actually a new one that would actually follow what happens on a Thursday. But what is your actual full schedule, Monday through Friday?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I wasn't sure. Were you?
I'm sorry, I started to inter- interrupt Mr. McRae because you had, just to clarify that the Wednesday hours they had before the construction were before they moved to this facility? And that they're reinstating that, but Mr. McRae is really asking you
Monday to Friday, what are the hours like?
Or Monday through Saturday, really. Monday through Saturday, you open, you're currently opening at eight-thirty and you close at twelve-thirty.
Yes.
And then one day a week, you're open from three-thirty to five-thirty. Is there anything else?
Yes, so we, uh, we are, that Thursday, we're open from, uh, eight-thirty to twelve-thirty. We're closed for a few hours, then we reopen at three-thirty. So from three-thirty to five-thirty.
Thursday, yeah, I meant, I said that one day a week, you're currently open.
Yes, I just want to make sure everyone was aware that we reopen, we close for a few hours and then
Okay.
Yes.
Um.
So the Wednesday, Wednesday shift, the Wednesday shift would be the eight-thirty to twelve and then the three, three-thirty to five-thirty as well?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, great. Now, the, um, it says that, uh, there's often a line of individuals outside the doors, uh, prior to the eight-thirty um, opening?
Yes, that's happened quite often, yes.
Okay. And, uh, during the course of the day, uh, is there still a significant amount of people waiting to get in or, uh, at the facility at twelve-thirty?
It appears that generally, uh, early on when we open and close to closing time. Of course, some people do come in the middle, but it seems like the biggest rush is the first thing in the morning and then just before we close.
So, Mr. Hill, I'm sorry, Nick, go ahead and then I'll ask my question.
So, uh, closed by, by five-thirty on Wednesdays and Thursdays or closed at twelve-thirty every day? The, the, in, the influx of people is at the end of the day?
Twelve-thirty and also the five-thirty, yes.
Okay.
Okay. So question to you.
Our busiest days right now are Thursday afternoons and Saturdays.
Okay, so Mr. Hill, question to you.
Yes.
I don't know how the commission's going to react, but I'm going to throw it out there. You write in your letter that the problem is that your current hours are not don't have the flexibility for working families, for people who get off of, of work and they're, and have trouble getting to you. So basically right now, you're anybody who works a normal, a nine-to-five type of schedule can only get to you on a Saturday. I mean, I'm assuming I'm assuming that if I'm working nine-to-five, I can only get to you on Saturday.
That's correct. And then, of course, many people work, uh, eight to four and a lot of people start at seven AM. So those are the individuals that generally come later in the afternoon on first.
But you're not accommodating people with a classic nine-to-five. So I, I wondered as I was reading this whether in fact a later hour one day a week on the, maybe even the three times a month when you're having the board meetings or something. But whether you, what you need is to give time to the folks that are coming at five, you know, to get out of work a little later, like at five. You're accommodating the seven to three, you're accommodating the eight to four. Should you have a way of accommodating folks that get out of work later? So that you spread it out some more, because right now everybody runs in right bef- right before you open it, right before you close, and that says, you know, you could smooth it out, you could be, I don't know. And again, I don't know, that's tough because your volunteers all have to go home and make dinner for their families, right? Or whatever they do. Okay, so I just throwing that out for you. Um, I'm not sure that the rest of the commission would agree with that, but I would like I, I hate, used to hate it when I couldn't get places because of my schedule. Uh, Mr. Levy, if you would go ahead and then Mr. Wells.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, Mr. Hill, can you uh, gi- give me an idea, why is it that you only have one afternoon? Is it?
We conditioned it, Mr. Levy.
Oh, but if you had more afternoons, would that solve the problem right off? Keeping the same hours?
If we had additional, uh, afternoon hours, I think it would be helpful to many of our families. And, uh, uh, honestly, we'll say that it actually came today in the staff meeting about, uh, being able to, us being able to stay open later. But of course, we're abiding by the conditions and the agreement that we currently have. But, uh, that did come up today and it is something we would consider, certainly.
Because my, my thought was that um, if we're trying to um, alleviate the lines uh, because there is such a shortage of hours uh, at certain times. If you, you know, if you make it more available over a longer period of time during the day, then people don't feel so compelled to come first thing in the morning. But, um, I'm just curious about your understanding and your feelings about that.
So what we, what we, I'm sorry, Mr. Hill, go ahead.
No, you go ahead. It's okay.
What, what I was going to say to you is, based on the fact that two of us have just asked you that, maybe when you come back for the final, you tuck it over with Patrick before you come in and you lay out what your optimal, what you all think is really optimal for alleviating the crunch that you're getting, because it's also puts a strain on your volunteers. And for the folks that weren't on the commission when we did this building, um, there was significant Um, there was significant neighborhood concern and opposition to it at the time. And so I, as I recall it, the commission was relatively conservative about the hours, trying to alleviate those concerns. Uh, now that it's been operating and we basically, I think, may have even said that come back if you find that you're constrained. So here they are and it makes sense to me that we be more open. Patrick, you would like to add something?
Yeah, I think, um, what would help with our staff is if, if extended hours every day is something that the commission is, is generally in favor of, that we, we talk about that as being an option now so that we're not, um, sort of shooting in the dark. Um, when, when they come back, uh.
Well, if I could answer, if I could put to the commission this. It actually eases the impact on the neighborhood if you spread when the people come. So if you're open a little later, um, so that people can come after they get out of work and have a little more time in the evening. Or even if you had a seven thirty in the morning. Um, that that, that actually smoothes out your traffic and congestion. So, um, I would be open to it. Um, how about the rest of you?
Works for me, Madam Chair. Fine.
Mary, Arne?
Uh, I particularly like the idea of early morning. Because traffic being what it is, it's going to be a lot easier to get in and out of that location at seven thirty than at three thirty.
Or, 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 and yet, I, five thirty is tough too, but on the other hand, if you've got, so here's the deal for someone who works. And they have a car, for starters, they're in a car, they got to drop their kids off at school, usually. Then they got to get to work, so their only flexibility may be after work, when they've got the kids. Um, or, you know, at some point after work, so it's the question for, Mr. Hill knows his usage pattern. So, okay, so Mary, Arne, Peter, were you also flexible? Okay, with flexibility, both Peters?
Yeah, I, I said I was, that's fine.
Peter Levy?
Uh, yes, I, I just want the, uh, uh, the applicant to let us know what they, they think is optimal. Uh, and, uh, have, make sure that they have some feedback from their neighbors. Um, I, 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 I get the impression that their neighbors are less concerned. So, um, this is a good time to revisit the hours.
I get the same impression, the only concern that we heard. Is that, and Putnam Park raised it during the initial application, they had some ponding. On the part of their property closest to this facility and they were concerned about that at the time. And, um, the question is, is it worse? Or has it, they feel, they, their take was that this facility had contributed to it. And that's the question we need to answer. Mr. McRae, you have your hand up.
Uh, yes, actually, yeah, just a quick question for Mr. Hill, uh, what time do the outside lights go off?
Six o'clock.
Okay, uh, and Mr. Leroy, if you, opportunity, if you can send us the original decision, I'd like to know if there was a limitation or a condition on the outside lights.
Um, yeah, I will.
Thank you.
I mean, it'll come with the app.
Right, with the hours, I'd like to see the hours kind of a schedule put together before I make any decision. Because I was on the commission when this was decided. And we had a very long detailed discussion about what this, what this use could be, should be, what we didn't want it to be.
Exactly.
And I want to make sure that we're not, uh, going back on to, you know, we have a decision that was made for specific reasons. Are we now negating all of those reasons and we're back to, you know, something maybe we didn't want and that's why we conditioned it?
Well, part of what I, my recollection, Nick, was that there was so much neighborhood concern. That we limited, we constrained their hours. And so what I, what, if, if it has settled in, as Mr. Levy said, that we should at least be open to considering something more flexible.
But you have to remember that it's settled in with the conditions that we've provided for way back, how many years ago, Mr. Leroy?
Yes, Mr. McRae, but the point we were making is that it actually could smooth the traffic. So they don't have to have more total hours, they could just have hours that went later on one day. Um, than the five thirty, right? So the issue is to smooth out the traffic demand so that it doesn't clump.
Right, so then in a sense, what you're saying is, if right now, the decision from years ago says it's a hundred hours, Monday through Sunday. That kind of thing, it's still a hundred hours because, but it's spread out in different allotments.
You would want to look, if you wanted to continue to constrain them, it's a way we could look at it. And we could decide what the right answer is.
Right, so looking at, you know, what, what are the hours proposed? Chart wise, so we really can understand it day by day, hour by hour.
Okay.
Right, and, well, you know, you know, Miss, but I, I think that if, if we can accommodate your peak demand. We'll probably make it easier on the neighborhood, because your demand is what it is and if we can smooth out when people come. Okay, I mean, if there's another economic downturn, you'll probably get a lot more people, but that is. We're, we're hoping that doesn't happen and at some level, as Ms. Jenkins said, we appreciate your being there.
Thank you.
And I think, yes, my, Mr. Leroy?
Uh, can I just ask a question about the refuges?
Mm-hmm.
Um, has, has the thought been given to a larger dumpster and not just more pickups? Or is it the nature of the refuse that makes it better to have frequent pickups?
It's the nature of the refuges mainly for recycling, as you can imagine, we get, uh, daily deliveries in huge cardboard boxes. Uh, the volunteers break those down every day, but we're finding that the dumpster gets filled up pretty quickly, even with the two pickups we have right now.
So Patrick's saying, should you have a bigger dumpster? And to that, I go back to Nick's comment, you know? Um, it depends what hour in the morning your pickup's going to be, because that was one of the things the neighbors were upset about. And in this one, it, it was to minimize their disturbance. Are you better off having a bigger dumpster than you are having extra pickup? So, Mr. Hill, just think about that, because I'm considering, I'm trying to remember all the material we heard at the time.
Right, and our dumpsters are in the front of our building, so they're not in the rear of the building next to Putnam.
So they don't hear it, and then it's just a question of what time. Because trust me, there's someone who can hear a pin drop.
True.
And it, I mean, sometimes I think I can, so. Um, okay, um, we would love you, um, Patrick knows the story with that ponding. And, and that section of the, of the Putnam Park. I don't know that it's their gutters, because it's, I thought it was far from their gutters. And the, it's a green pipe with a weep hole and, um, it, it, we have, I think, Patrick, has Patrick shared with you that all the correspondence he got? Mr. Hill?
Uh, I received one correspondent, I believe she copied, uh, Patrick, myself and a number of other people, yes.
Okay, so it would be great to get that addressed as we consider. So how do we make you a better neighbor, generally? And one of the issues is this, and how do we facilitate it so that your operation, um, has less impact? The traffic will be smoother during the day and has less impact around. I think we can help you with that. Is there any question you'd like to ask us?
Uh, just, I guess, next steps, I guess, uh, Patrick and I will, will, will meet, okay. Well, okay.
He's the, he's the guru. Don't let it go to his head, though.
No other questions for me then.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Hill.
Thank you so much. Patrick will be in touch, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Okay, so our next application, oh, I gotta wait till he comes in. And then. All right, now I saw. I think, I think I got everybody. All right. Um, oh, I thought I got Mr. Casby, there he comes, okay.
I was, I was going to ask about that, Madam Chair.
No, no, I know it was the three of you. Um, so, Mr. Hegney, good evening, our next application is a discussion item for Mason Street Partners LLC. This is a pre-application and it's to construct an assisted housing development with ninety-four units. Of which thirty-eight would be below market and would count towards the ten percent state goal. Uh, it's on four parcels, previously located, previous location of the Honda facilities on Mason Street. Um, it is in two buildings, uh, one is five-story and the other is six. And, uh, that is actually part of the discussion that we're going to have. Now, Mr. Hegney, as you saw earlier and are aware, I think through Patrick, we had asked, uh, the trust to come and comment on their discussions with you on, on these applications. Um, just tell us when you would like to do that, if you want to start with that or do it later in our discussion.
No, I, I think it worked well with the other application to start with, uh, Mr. Finger's, uh, comments, uh, at the beginning. So I, I would defer to that.
All right, thank you very much. So, Mr. Finger, if you would go ahead, and again, we heard you once, so.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair.
If you repeat everything again, we'll get it.
I'll try not to be too repetitive, but again, just to set the stage, um, the developer, as with the Benedict Place project, in this case, in, instance, the developer approached the Affordable Housing Trust Board. Uh, approached the, the then-chair, Bob Baralek, to talk about what the plan was, the eight thirty G plan was. And, and Bob then brought in myself and another member of our board. And we had multiple conversations with, uh, Mr. Casby about his project. Um, the initial present- presentation of the eight thirty G was seven stories of condo development. On the each side of the street and six and, uh, five stories of condo development on the west side of the street. And with, with affordable split between those two buildings. Quickly, we looked at, did it make sense, from the trust board standpoint, did it make sense? For the town to be having condo, affordable condo units. We saw two potential issues. One is, there's certain complexities that I'm not a hundred percent clear on. Um, about how you actually monitor affordable condo units. Because for affordable, uh, units, you need to have certain income limitations. And if you sell an affordable condo unit, what happens if the, the purchaser then earns more money? Gets married, has a partner that makes a fair amount of money, that all of a sudden they put them over the limit? So that was one issue. The other was, we just didn't think, given the needs of some of the people in Greenwich who would be, who would be appropriate for affordable units, that condo units would be within their reach. I mean, we're looking at a town that has, over twenty percent of its population are Alice residents. Asset limited, income constrained, unemployed, meaning they barely make or don't even make enough money. To be able to cover basic needs such as housing and childcare. The thought that they could then pay two hundred fifty thousand for a one-bedroom apartment or three hundred seventy-five thousand, if that was the number. I think for a two-bedroom apartment, just didn't make sense for us, to us. So, that factored into the trust board members' discussion with Mr. Casby. We said, okay, we can provide a modest financial, um, grant to you or loan to you. That would enable you to do area median income, again, as I mentioned it with the Benedict Place project. For, in return for that, you get to charge higher condo rents, top condo prices. Or if you go rental, higher rental rates than you would be getting under eight thirty G set aside, which is state median. So, we also talked about not only getting a smaller building or buildings. But also more units, same kind of, more affordable units, same discussion we have Benedict. Again, we can't dictate to the developer what they should do or what they can do. In this case, Mr. Casby came and said, after many iterations, let me give you my financial information. We did extremely deep dive into his financial, multiple iterations. Um, every time Mr. Casby gave us some financial information, probably to his chagrin, we asked for more. We asked him to come back and give us more detailed information. He did so each time. The end of the day, he said, look, I will, if, if I can go AMI. I can decrease the seven-story building to six-story. I still need the fi- the five stories on the west side of the street. We said, okay, that's good. We think rentals are much better. We'd like you to look at rentals. So Mr. Casby, you know, did the numbers, came back to us and said, okay, I can give you this mix of market rate and affordable rentals on the west side of the street. We saw an opportunity, we only looked at his numbers and thought that he could do more, he can create more affordable units. We pushed, he, you know, resisted a little bit, but at the end of the day, again, crunching the numbers on both sides. We said, give us a fully affordable rental building on the west side of the street. You can comp- compensate for yourself with the condo, the high-priced condos that you can sell on the other side of the street. But with the rentals, all affordable, take a look at that. He came back, he looked at it and he came back and said, I can do that. I can increase from the thirty percent to forty percent affordable. I give you rentals. I can have some one, two, three bedrooms. We said, we'd like to see more, not three bedrooms, give us some more one or two bedrooms. Result was, I think it was thirty-eight, right, thirty-eight affordable rental units. He then gave us a matrix on the size of those units. And as somebody who has seen a lot of market rate housing rental through, throughout the state of Connecticut. And some of the more recent ones in Greenwich, the unit sizes of these affordable rental units. Exceed virtually every market rate rental that's currently being built, certainly in the area. Um, they're very generously sized. Mr. Casby, we asked, talked about amenities. Ultimately, he found a way to include amenities in the rental building. So from a comparable standpoint, we didn't look at, you know, how do you compare building A with building B, east side, west side? We looked at comparability on rentals, on the affordables here, with other rental buildings throughout the town. And again, we thought, given what the needs are in this town, that what he was presenting. Was the right mix for the town. This is a great location, a block away from the train station. Easy access to the shops on Greenwich Avenue, close to the park, close to the ferry. Um, it, again, it, it checked all the boxes. And, um, you know, again, there was a lot of give and take, we just think this would be a wonderful project. And, you know, for the affordability here, forty percent affordable units, got a reduction in the size. So unlike a lot of other projects where it was an either or, size reduction and or increase units. We got a little, we got a little bit of a size reduction and a big boost in the affordable units. In addition, there's retail on the ground floor, which we think plays in well with the Greenwich Avenue swinging around on Mason Street. Add the, you know, the foot traffic, um, that is, is representative of Greenwich Avenue. So, all in all, it was a very, very deep dive on the numbers. We think we got to a really good place. Um, got Mr. Casby to compromise. We then took the result of that to the full board. We had several meetings with the full board and again, this was approved seven zero. And the enthusiasm on the location of this project was significant on the trust side. And that's where we are, um, and that's how we, we got here. Again, the economics, we just thought, were much better for the town to have rentals that were affordable as opposed to being condos. Again, if anybody has any questions, um, we're the tru- happy to try to answer them.
Uh, does anybody have any questions? Um, I'll, I'll ask, jump in really fast, uh, I don't know who to ask this of and it's not a zoning question. Would it have been possible to do all rental with an option to buy? So that you didn't run into that problem and you could have had, what I'm struggling with more than anything else. And, and this is what the commission was struggling with yesterday, was that there's one affordable unit only in the market building. And one market rate unit only in the one across the street and the affordable, in the assisted building. Would it have been possible to structure it with an option to buy so you could mix them all up and mix the sizes up in the building so that there were some small units or is that not good for, does that just not work? Cause it's not a not something. I'm asking whoever knows, to be honest. I don't know. I know Mr. Hegney doesn't know about building buildings. I know the other two. I know Mr. Finger and Mr. Casby know how to build buildings, so.
Well, I, I'll, I'll let Mr. Casby answer the, but let me just say one thing again, with the condos, even if it's rent to buy. Again, you know,
Can't do it.
How does it monitored when income levels exceed what the affordable limits were? I, I just don't know how that works.
I get that, but I was just trying to think, you know, what if, okay. Then you, the person then find, you know, you say to the person, you realize you've got this problem. And, and yet what you're accommodating is odds are they're not going to make that option. Okay, Mr. Low is dying to ask a question.
Doesn't this, uh, doesn't this happen today? I mean, the, the, the town has to monitor.
Rentals.
Pardon?
Rentals.
Monitor rentals.
Just leaves. So the way it works is that for us on the eight thirty Gs, that's what Crystal does. And so Crystal has to know what people are making. And then when you're making too much money, you are told to leave.
Right.
So if you get married, but if you've bought an apartment, it's a whole different animal because now they tell you to leave and what are you supposed to do with your?
Well, I, 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 if I could just clarify that, it's not a leave situation. The whole project needs to be in compliance, so the mix has to always be there. So if you have a tenant who
Right.
earns enough money to not qualify anymore, you can, and you have another vacancy, you can then come back in and make that the affordable and have the resident live in the, the unit.
But.
Not as a, as a, 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 an opportunity unit. And the same would be for, I believe.
You can't do it in these, Patrick, because all the affordables are the same size, so you can't. Well, I guess you could move them to a two bedroom.
Size, it doesn't matter. It's, it's the quantity of the number, right? If, if, if we approve forty percent or twenty percent or thirty percent, that's, that's what's going to be the, the operating.
If Mr. X is now making too much money and the, and the affordable he's in, where are you going to find another, another affordable? Cause you can't do it across the street. Now the housing, the housing authority does it. The housing authority, if you start making too much money, they go, okay, cool. We're just going to charge you more rent. And this other, and this other part apartment, you're going to go to, to a higher, up more closer to a fair market. And this other apartment is going to go to forty percent of market. So the housing authority juggles it all around. But if there's all the, if all the, if all the assistants are basically, you can't make a new assisted, like they can make a new assisted out of their inventory because they have some that are at market and some that are, that are assisted. So that, that's the, that, that's the issue. And I was just wondering, is there another way you could get around it? Could you have done rent to buy? And I'm sure Mr. Casby knows a lot about this. Um, and I shouldn't even be asking, but the real question we have is we wanna look like, I wanna look like we're sincere about being inclusive. And if there is only one assisted unit in a building, it, and all, and that's it. And everything else, I mean, is that inclusive? Given the size of it and that the other one is all assisted with only one market, does that meet the objective of the law? Or are we not meeting the objective of eight thirty G? And y'all know more about that because um, you've all worked on these projects, Mr. Finger. I know you've worked on eight thirty Gs in other part of the state.
No, I, I haven't done, I have, I've done some affordable, but not, not eight thirty G.
Oh, not eight thirty Gs. Okay, but still, tell us, is this sufficiently inclusive to meet the intent of the law, the way it's structured? Do you, what do you think of that? Is that what we were struggling with?
My feeling, if you go back and listen to the, all the debates, particularly last year in Hartford, you know, we talked about this amongst the trust board members. We're a block away from the train station, walking distance from town. All the things that they were trying to force with fair housing and all, um, uh, fair share and stuff like that. This meets everything. This.
By the way, the fair share bill is back. It came in yesterday.
Okay.
Um, so it meets everything. You've got, is it? Does it look satisfactory that it, there's only one unit of each in the buildings? That's if, tell me you guys if I'm wrong, because that's what I thought you guys were struggling with yesterday. Mr. Low, go ahead. I know you wanna, you've even raised your physical hand now. Go.
Yeah, well, so I, I, this is what I was going to get at. I mean, in the memorandum from Mr. Smith and Mr. Hoiler, uh, under the, the heading of evaluation, that it, they cite at least two questions arise with respect to the project and affordable housing, et cetera. And one is the project consists of a, a separate building. This is in their memo. Now it's been changed. Uh, so, and my question is, is it the position of the applicant that integrating a single unit, one market rate, the other affordable into each uh, building answers or addresses that reference question? Or is it merely, are you just, are we just paying lip service to the intent? So, so I, I know I'm being redundant to what.
I always like it when someone else says, yeah, but you phrased it more succinctly. So we're at, that's the question they were asking yesterday.
I mean, it, 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 I mean, why, why even bother with, I mean, it's just, it, it's, what, what are we satisfying? By, by moving, you know, one unit into either place.
So that's our question.
Chair, do you want me to answer that now or?
Yeah, answer, answer it now. I think it's important.
This is, this is an important and crucial point.
Important and crucial, and that's where everybody was hung up yesterday. I think everybody was saying yesterday, great location, great concept, um, transportation oriented, all that stuff. And then everybody got stuck on this point. So go ahead.
So this came up at the December twelfth hearing where we presented the pre-app for the first time to you.
Absolutely.
And that's why we went to, uh, to Brian Smith, who's an expert on eight dash thirty Gs around the state, gives lectures on it and seminars, uh, and said, so it, are, are we within the letter of the law by having a building across the street that is all assisted housing and a market on the other side?
The intent of the law, Mr. Hegney.
And, and the, but also the letter of the law. You, you, you can't say, well, the law, we think the law said something else, so we're going to make it stricter. You can't make it stricter.
Well, excuse me, Mr. Hegney. I think what, what Adam Chair is also asking is not just the letter of the law, but the spirit of the law.
There you go.
She's referring to it as the intent of, of the law. And if we get hung up on strictly, well, this, this satisfies the, the integration issue or having, you know, one or the, one over here and one over there. That, you know, that doesn't pass the, the smell test in my view, but.
So, okay, well, we're gonna, we're gonna let you talk, Mr. Hegney. I'll mute Mr. Low and myself. Go ahead.
No, you won't.
Go ahead.
Madam Chair, I know you won't, but that's okay. But the, the purpose, uh, and the question that we asked Robinson and Cole was, is this something that's permitted? Can you, can you do what we're proposing? Because we think that this works on this, for this project, we think that this works well. We can provide the rental housing, which we think is what's really needed. And we can have it in the location where everyone thinks it should be, and we can have these units comparable, as Bill was saying, to market rate units at a substantially discounted rental. And the answer they came back with, both looking at the statute, eight, eight dash thirty G and, and other statutes, along with case law, was what we're proposing is acceptable. There is nothing that prohibits this from, from being done. Now, can you read into it something else? Yeah, but, but that's, that's, if the legislature wants it to say something differently, then the legislature needs to amend the statute. Not to say, well, we meant something else, or we inferred it, or we implied it. We're, we're following the law here and we're providing in this way many more affordable assisted housing units than we could if we just went straight to eight dash thirty G and mixed them in together. That, and that's what Josh has been going over with the, the Housing Trust Fund Board. How do these numbers work? How do you make a project like this work and maximize those number of units? And, and that's been the discussion back and forth uh, between Josh and uh, the, the housing board to arrive at what we have for you. Now, why did we add one unit in on each building? We had a sit down with staff and with your counsel. And uh, the thought was that this perhaps would make it uh, more acceptable or palatable. Even though it's not under the memo from Robinson and Cole, necessary to do to meet the law. And so that's why we put in the third option that we have on the chart to present to you. Because we thought that that's what frankly, you, you would hear if you received a memo from your counsel. Yeah, that's not something that we would be privy to or eligible to see. But something that we were hoping that you would receive by now with various circumstances out there, that's not something that is uh, is feasible, but uh, uh, we wanted to uh, we, we wanted to be able to provide that to you as another option. We think the one that we presented to you with the thirty-eight units of affordable and the, uh, the ninety-four total, it is, is what you are in a position to approve. Both in the letter and spirit of the law. And uh, and we submitted the other one after discussions with staff and council, in your council. So that, that's where that comes from. We're, we're, we're very much comfortable going with the ninety-four units uh, and the thirty-eight uh, uh, assisted housing versus the eighty-seven units and thirty-five uh, assisted housing.
Mr. Hegney, um, in this same memorandum, there is a there is commentary on, on quote comparable size and workmanship, right? And, and as the memorandum goes on, uh, on page six, there is a, a comment that, that the eastern parcel units, and I'm quoting, will be market rate and they will be larger. And the western parcel units will be affordable units and they'll be smaller. So that would suggest we're, they're not of comparable size. And I don't know about the workmanship, but um, where, where has our, um, the, the town attorney come out on this? Are we still don't know or am I just out of the loop?
No, 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 we're waiting to hear, um.
Right.
Um, I saw the, I saw the Land use lawyer. We were in a meeting till eleven o'clock last night together, so I know she didn't work on it last night, so.
Yeah, but so I, I mean, I think these are important questions and we can
Yeah.
batter back and forth on this.
And some of it is beyond the legal question, of course, which is I, I'm very sensitive about every time I go and testify in Hartford, the perception of Greenwich.
Absolutely.
And the treatment that I get when I'm testifying because I'm from Greenwich. And I wanted, I want to show that we're putting our best foot forward. Now, Mr. Casby probably doesn't believe that, but I do want to show that we're putting our best foot forward and making a genuine effort. And so I wanted to pass the sniff test. Mr. Finger, I'm sorry you have your hand up.
To Bill, uh, to respond, because uh, he did touch on this earlier.
Yeah, yes. So we're gonna let him repeat that part again.
Yeah, I, I, I just do want to repeat that. We looked at that issue. We didn't look at it from the, you know, legal opinion because we were talking about this amongst ourselves, trust board members, before we saw the legal opinion that um, that Mr. Casby, Mr. Hegney obtained. And we view the comparability based upon other standard of, uh, apartment, rental apartments in the area. And again, these were not comparable because they were larger. These were not comparable because they had amenities that others didn't. So yes, it wasn't comparable. It exceeded what is out there in market rate housing. Therefore, we came to conclusion that from the comparable standpoint, which is not something that's in eight thirty G, but just from a, you know, an intent, maybe if you will, or just a, you know, the smell test. We, we felt very comfortable with pushing Mr. Casby to do these rentals and set them at a size that was comparable to other apartments. And, and again, reiterating, he did that plus. So again, you know, I, I do, I do develop market rate in other parts of the state. And his one bedroom units are larger than our one bedroom units in market rate.
But, but Mr. Finger, I, I, I appreciate that, but you, you, when you speak of comparable size, I thought that what the, the, uh, discussion here is comparable to what is in that development, not comparable to what is in other developments, right? So I, I, I don't mean, I may be missing something here, and I totally appreciate that, that you appreciate that this developer is providing maybe a, a much greater benefit. But when we're looking at, when we're, we're comparable, I believe in this context refers to what's in one unit and what's in the other unit.
Understood, but again, we, we felt, we, the trust felt that, that the town is better served by having rental units that were affordable as opposed to condo units. So right away, when you're having rentals versus condos and condos in the three, four, five million dollar range, I, I, I think that comparability analysis that you're talking about just kind of goes out the window. It doesn't, it doesn't, in my opinion, doesn't make sense. Um, I mean, again, that's how we looked at it. I, I, I just don't want you to think that the trust board ignored that issue. We, we focused on it. I'm, I can't give you, you know, what the legal answer is, but something we looked at and that's how we analyzed it from our.
No, I, I, I appreciate that, and I, I didn't mean to impugn your analysis. Uh, I, I just thinking that perhaps we, we as a town ne- need to address this from the legal standpoint and uh, from a perception standpoint, um, be it in Hartford or just it within town residents or and, and how do we then apply this as some sort of standard for future developments? It is suddenly it becomes, well, we're going to compare this to the development uh, over on a different street or in a different part of town. Anyway, I think we need help from the.
Okay, so just quickly.
Mr. Low, I, I do want to respond to it because I think there's something very important here. Mr. Casby has hired Robert A. M. Stern Architects to design these buildings, both the buildings, not just one. They are a renowned architectural firm. They do hundreds and.
Familiar with the firm.
And both buildings will be designed by Robert A. M. Stern Architects. The finishes will be comparable between the two. The amenities will be comparable between the two. We're providing a, a, a number of amenities throughout the building, um, in the basement and, and on the roof deck. Uh, and to allow for uh, the comparable amenities between the condos and the rentals. Uh, and the other part of what we had presented to you is these, and as, as Bill was saying, these are very comparable to the market rate units. Uh, we're at twelve hundred square feet for a two bedroom. Uh, Jane loft is eleven hundred, station, which you approved in Old Greenwich is eleven hundred. The mill, which was just converted from office to apartments is at eleven hundred. But all of those are anywhere from two to three times higher for rents. So we're providing something that is not only comparable to the condo building, but also comparable to the market rate rentals that are out there in town. So I, I, I think we, we. So I I I think we we meet both of those criteria of comparable. And it's not and it's not just size, I should say. It it's it's finishes, it's amenities, it's. Um, uh, and location.
Yeah, but the term, I I I understand this, but the term was comparable size and workmanship comparing the rentals uh to the condos. And I I think this, I'm on, I'm beating a dead horse here, but so. But we, I think just we need to look into this and what the implications are down the road.
Okay, Mr. Levy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, yes, and and to just piggyback off of uh what Mr. Lo said. We have to look at this globally or townwide. Uh, and understand the implications going forward. And I think there's some complication that you create by. Uh, uh. Giving us this proposal. What this may open the door for a slippery slope as far as the configuration of. A project and uh going forward and uh I think that um.
Okay, so Mr. Levy, I I hear you, but you know what our option is, right? Our option is a full on eight thirty G as big as Mr. Casby wants to make it. And he can do thirty, he'll do thirty percent at eighty sixty of state median income and he'll do whatever he wants. They are trying to work with us by giving us options. Yes. This is what I said to you guys yesterday. It's not an enviable position to be in to make hard choices, but at least someone's letting us. Make some choices.
Yes, well, my my choice would would let would uh opt to see as a a. A project with less mass and not as high uh in order to.
He has no reason, because if he, if if we don't find a way to work. At eighty percent of area median income with Mr. Casby, he then goes to state median income and he has to make it bigger. Okay?
Mr. Levy, I I want to add, I don't think this is creating a slippery slope.
Okay, well, you can say that. I can do the other part.
One block from the train station. If if you find another property that's one block from the train station that fits all the criteria that we have. You should probably be approving that, but I don't think you're going to find a lot of those.
You know, no, what.
Well, that just belies the everything else that you're presenting to us. Yes, it might be a good location, but. At at what size and what cost to the downtown? And I think that uh it's it's very uh concerning to me. Uh, some of the aspects of this proposal, there's some very good aspects of it. Uh, the architecture is uh very thoughtful. Um, and has a uh. Uh, some good language, uh, you know, you know, classical language, which uh dampens the, you know, the the. Uh, the size of of the project, but uh the it is, it's still still dwarfs. The rest of the of the downtown. And a large project like this can put uh inordinate stress um on. Uh, the commercial district down there, uh, which may have a deleterious effect. So there's a lot of information we still need to understand about this project uh in order to feel comfortable with all of that.
So five stories on one side of the street and six stories on the other. Mr. Hagney, do you remember what the eight thirty G was originally? No, because you weren't representing it. I think it was Mr. Hasling. Patrick, do you remember?
Sorry, which project?
Which project?
When it, when you first started working on it, how? Didn't miss, I don't remember when you came into this, Mr. Hagney. So I I'm probably getting the timeframe wrong.
On this particular site?
Yeah, you originally came in with a bigger building. I think it was a story more on both sides.
Or ten stores.
Story more on one side.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. So good having a banker.
Seven on the east and five on the west, and now it's six on the east and five on the west.
Right.
And the unit, since you have it open the first time? Oh, that's right, because we got that little table, so we know that the first time it came in. Thank you.
It was a hundred and six units in initially.
Right, okay, so um. It's sounding to me like the commission wants to hear from their own counsel. And we don't have that. Um. And Patrick, you had talked to the state, to DOH?
Well, the, yeah, we've we've had meetings with the DOH before and 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 the the the. The news has not changed. They 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 even brought up last time we met. About the location of units being something that's critical by case law, so um. You know, there there is, there is a confusing message because um from a outsider preview, you know, th- this is a project that makes. Sense in the location and the density and the amount of units and everything else like that, but then when you talk to the people who execute the housing law. They say, you know, there's a, but there's all these other parameters and 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 they're not written down anywhere and and some of them are. In decisions made up by the courts and and but they're not um, they're not tested, so um. We're we're um, we're out in in front on this type of a situation, so I don't have a lot of guidance to give.
And it's also, I can't remember, I don't think it was the new Canaan. Not getting denied their moratorium. Theirs was just for, it might have been Westport, but one of them got denied their more their HUE points. For a reason that the town had been unaware would make something not count. I mean, some of it is. It's just not clear what the DOH is going to count, the Department of Housing. Um. Um, I I feel badly because I, if we had our own counsel had written to us, I think it would help.
Well, I'll just put it another way, Madam Chair. I I don't think it's the fault of the applicant and and the trust trying to come up with.
Not at all.
That work for Greenwich. I I and I I I mean this in the most polite way, but it's going to come out terribly. The DOH that they, what they do is they don't tell us what's not going to count until we try to count them. And so wh- when when you're playing that kind of game, we're never, we're never in 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 a point of being able to put things in a direction and follow. Any rules because the rules are never disclosed. So, you know, we we try to build below market units. And then we find out that they don't count because of some factor that we, you know, weren't aware of and and then we, you know, the it 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 just keeps, the target keeps moving. Um, and and the the context keeps shifting and it's not um. It's not a very forthright process when it comes to moratorium points, to be honest, so.
But isn't it pretty clear when it comes to the ten percent uh?
It does, absolutely.
So, and that's what, that's what we're focused on now. That's what our real.
Yeah.
Which is why your problem is. I mean, I'll just say that everyone sort of issued some thoughts, but. Uh, I'm going to be more positive. We too did affordable housing for all the reasons. I think Bill Fager was particularly persuasive and I'm impressed with all the thoughtfulness that the Affordable Housing Trust. Put into it and uh I think we need to give it very, very serious consideration.
I've, I definitely feel the same way, Mr. Wells. I feel that um we owe it to Greenwich. To try to advance our affordability and inclusion. Um, Mr. Casby, you've been very quiet. Is it because you're refraining from swearing at us or would you like to add something?
I uh, I'm enjoying it. I, you know, I I've been. I've been, I've been uh, been working at this for over a year and I I live in the town and I think very much about all these things that we're all talking about. And I have a lot of appreciation for uh Peter's comments and uh A- Arnold's comments and. Peter Peter Lowe's comments, and I think that there are fiduciary, there are responsibilities to the town. There's responsibilities to the state and we are struggling with uh what is good for. The greater good, right? And we're all looking at what are we trying to do for the greater good of this town to advance our affordability and. I think what Bob Barilak and and Bill and Brooks have done is created an entity. That is pushing forward the logical process through the lens of a. Person that is trying to make a living to make success of something that is subsidizing one thing with another. And I think they were very shrewd and very intelligent about how they went about their process by saying. We have two choices effectively. We have a building that can have, a a project rather, that can have. Uh, affordability on both sides of the street for sale. And essentially, none of those units will get utilized by the town of Greenwich.
Yeah, I know that.
Which is a trap, it's a total travesty.
Mm hmm.
My opinion, or you have an incredibly efficient. Maximizing of a project site to create. What is arguably the most advancement of Greenwich. Opportunity to provide affordable housing at a rate that i- is never been done before. You you're looking at nearly four percent of the requirement of the town's affordability with this project. You you're knocking out that requirement and you're doing it with. Pro development and quality and fit and finish and size that is above and beyond the market. It's it's an enormous win for the town. And, you know, Tom and I were talking about this and saying. Where where do the firemen, where are the policemen, where are the, where are the nurses? Where do they commute to when there's a snowstorm? Not that we have many these days, but.
Well.
They can't get around on in a car and they need to get to their jobs. We're literally at the train station and now you have.
Yeah.
A a maximum amount of units to do this. So I I struggle with these concepts and that and and when I sat with John Wetmore. And and Laura McGeechee and and Pat and we talked about these things. And we did all these studies where we looked at FHA and how FHA is an underpinning. And I read millions of documents about FHA law and how that implies. Um, you know, equal housing and all of these things fundamentally, and you'll read those uh zone, those uh memorandums from Robinson Cole. There is a uh a clear understanding that. You you're you're not discriminating against any party by having. An extraordinary amount of above market quality product in a development that is, you know, trying, so. Going back to for sale and for rent, you cannot integrate for sale and for rent in one building. It's like trying to. Fit from a developer standpoint, a a a circle in a in a square. It doesn't work contextually. So you have two purpose filled, purposeful built buildings across the street from one another. And you're creating the maximum amount of efficiency for these buildings. So the the idea that I proposed at the last uh meeting that I had with John and and Laura. And Pat was, look, let's let's consider. You know, taking one unit that'll never be sold, by the way. It will sit there. If you look at sixty two Mason Street, it's a perfect example of of a project that has two units that are. Affordable condos that have been empty for two years. They haven't sold. And and so what are we doing? We're we're basically taking a unit. That could otherwise be used for an efficient purpose in the town and we're, we're doing that for optics, but. In my opinion, and I think I would say uh Bill's opinion. And Bob's opinion and Brooks's opinion is that we need to take a deep dive and maximize. The need of the town, which is as many units as we can get. With affordability and and that is the program in the in the second option that the Housing Trust approved, which is thirty eight units. And I would urge you to speak with John Wetmore about his opinion on Robinson Cole's memos, and I think you'll find the the same understanding is that. We're pioneering this thing right now and there is no precedent. Uh, for not doing this, and I think it's, I think it would be something to be very proud of to ultimately get this program done.
Okay, um, just to clarify, for the commission, um, when Mr. Casby says um almost four percent. Uh, we. We have, we need another eleven hundred units, affordable units to reach our ten percent. That is a bad way of saying it because that kind of assumes the denominator doesn't grow. However, the advantage of the forty percent affordable. Is that it's a lot better in terms of the denominator, um, for those of us who are who love algebra. Um, but of that thousand units, what he's saying is you get of that eleven hundred units, you're getting thirty eight and that's. Three and a half percent, four percent. So that's his point. Is that you're making significant strides, which we don't normally get in a building. Um. So I I think you're right. I think we have to. We probably should have asked you to postpone tonight, given where we're coming out, but I wanted to go ahead. Patrick reached out to me last night. I wanted to go ahead and talk to you because I wanted the commission to share the concerns that we had about. Being about trying to make the governor keeps telling us he wants to see us make meaningful strides. And I don't think there and and it's so. I'm glad we got to talk and I'm glad Bill Finger got to explain how the trust approached it and how you've been thinking about it, Mr. Casby. Our next step. Is you're right, is to get our counsel, unless someone stop me if people disagree, but get our counsel to opine. Um, and um, I was uh. I'd like to, I I want to go back and and review the case law with our counsel very specifically. Um, uh, does you have Mr. Hagney, Mr. Casby, Mr. Finger, Commission, any other thoughts on how we could? Address all of this?
Uh, I'm in agreement uh with just that and I I, you know, I agree with the. Mr. Casby on much of what he has to say. And I think he does appreciate that we are serving as 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 stewards here. Uh, in a sense for the town and I think we're all trying to do what's best for the town, so let's not, I mean, I don't want to. We we thi- this shouldn't be in any way uh confrontational. Um, and and we just, as part of our due diligence, we need to educate ourselves. Um, we're constantly having people come to us who know way more than we do, and I'm the first one to say I'm the most ignorant among.
We don't ever let that stop us, though.
Yeah, and that doesn't stop me from opining on it, but I I'm ready to be challenged. And so I I'd like to hear. Uh, from the council and uh and, you know, I'd I. I accept everything Mr. Finger said as well and and it's particularly useful to know. The process of what the trust went through and I I that was, it's great to have you, Mr. Finger, here for this application and the other one. Uh, but it, we're we're just, we're trying to 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 feel our way through this and we're. Constantly upgrading our education and I think this next step would be part of that.
Right, and our our inquiries don't don't mean to diminish uh the benefits. And uh the the task in front of us to create um, you know, affordable housing. Uh, nonetheless, we have a very large constituency that we're trying to. Manage and understand uh the needs of the town and uh give you the benefit of. Of some of that information. Uh, as uncomfortable as some of it might be, uh, and uh. None of this is a uh. Is straightforward and perfect. It is a, it is uh something that we have to kind of swim through together. So we're we're trying to do that now and that's the purpose of our this preliminary. Uh, but by no means are we, does that mean that? We we we're approaching anything, you know, we're, we're not comfortable yet.
And we're genuinely trying to find an answer.
Yes, and uh, uh, you know, the there's, there's always a solution. Um, and uh, we can come to a consensus, but I don't want to diminish uh the. Um. Uh, the issues that concern the town. Because eight thirty G uh isn't concerned with a lot of the issues that we have to deal with. On all other applications. And nonetheless, uh, we we have your ear and we want you to know what we're thinking.
Um, okay. Um, anything else, Mr. Hagney or Mr. Casby or? Um, anything else, Mr. Hagney or Mr. Casby or Mr. Finger?
There, there were some other things that came up at the briefing, but I, I, I think we'll
We gotta get the big.
We'll leave those to another day. I, I think we're, we're having the important discussion that, that we need to have. Um, and, and the, and the commission knows where we're coming from and how we developed this and how Josh worked with, uh, the, the trust fund board. So, uh, that, that, that's really what we wanted to, to share with you this evening and, and to have the discussion.
Okay, I'm gonna just ask, does anybody from the public wish to speak on this application on Mason Street? Um, it is a whole bunch of addresses on Mason Street, but it's the old Honda facility. Kindly raise your virtual hand if you wish to speak. I see a fair number of people, but they don't seem to want to speak. Okay. Um, all right. Um, I think the best thing to do is as soon as we've heard from our council, um, it, is that, that's a confidential opinion, right?
Yes.
So, um, are we able to discuss that in executive session?
Nope, sorry. Uh, I believe executive session is for.
No, we're not able to discuss that. So let's hear from our council and we'll figure out, you communicate with us and we'll figure out how to get a message back to the applicant.
Could make a, a big fire with smoke.
Yeah, white smoke. Comes out of my kitchen every morning. Um. Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much for making the time and I hope that you were not discouraged by our effort to think all this through.
I'm not discouraged. I, I think we, we will, as John Wetmore said, work in lockstep to make something very successful for this town. So I'm very excited to work with all of you here, really.
And thank you for your service. And by the way, he's on the Central Metal Building Committee. And
I'm missing a, uh, call right now with Dennis.
Now, we lost a commissioner to it. So thank you for your service and thank you for working on that because it's been a tough, I know it's been a tough road.
We're, we're getting there. We're getting there. Thanks. Thanks, everyone for taking the time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Take care. Thank you.
You're not doing four eleven Stanwich, so I'm removing him, right? Oh, I just did. Bringing you back.
I, he moved out of my periphery and I was like, oh no, she un-promoted him.
No, he's, I, it was funny because I, I thought he shook his head when I said you're not on four, four eleven, so.
What? You always seem to be wanting to get rid of Mr. Hagney and it's, it's making him probably a little paranoid, right?
I don't know if Mr. Hagney would get paranoid. So you guys, um, just for everybody's sake, while we're at a quick break, one of the things that I realized yesterday is the trust needs to come in and tell us and explain the deals that they have worked. When they have done that, because otherwise we just get the applicant and we don't know why the trust did what they did. And we don't know how they came out. So we're only hearing the applicant's version and not the extent to which the trust worked, the numbers, et cetera. Now, on this one, we knew what this was going to look like because this is what the last pre-app looked like. So, um, we had seen all this before. But I think it's valuable that every time we are looking at something the trust is gonna, is negotiating, that when we do the pre-app, that the trust come in, be it Mary, who is with us, or Bill Finger, who is her co-chair, come in and talk to us about what they've negotiated, why and why it works. And then we can push back at that time. We could even, I don't know, Patrick, could we even hear the trust on a standalone without the applicant doing a pre-app?
By pushback, what, what are you meaning by that? I mean, I, I, these have to be separate discussions, right? So i- if you.
No, no. What I'm saying is yesterday there were people going, what? One unit?
Oh, right.
Okay, that's what I meant.
Like, I, I, well, I think you've said this, Madam Chair, you know, the, the trust is, has their own bylaws, right? They have their own enabling legislation, right? And their goals in there and they're following that. So it's not a zoning perspective on these things. It, it is a, they're looking at it from a efficient method of producing affordable units, right? And so w- w- when you look at what their bylaws say, they're, they're following those. But again, it, it can conflict with what, what we do, right?
But they just need to explain to us. So we talked to.
Absolutely. No, I agree.
And then somebody, um, won't feel like people felt yesterday.
Sure.
That they were taken by surprise, or, or I mean, this is what the pre-app had last time. But you know, the trust comes in and does what Bill Finger has just did today, twice. We were gonna have eighty stories and now we have seventy and it was whatever it's gonna be. He said, and he explains how they did the numbers so that then the commission can ask what that negotiation was and understand why they think it's an optimal result. Because otherwise, we're just.
No, very help, very helpful perspective to get, for sure.
And Madam Chair, I guess the only question would be, you're suggesting that at the time the trust comes in and has already signed a commitment with the applicant?
I would actually really seriously consider waiting, but that's your call.
Okay.
Because you're locked in when the applicant comes in for the pre-app. And if we make a helpful suggestion at the pre-app, you've already committed. But what if you, you all come in together, you explain why then you think this is the optimal thing? And we say, as Peter Levy said today, well, maybe I want three stories and ten percent affordable.
And then I, I'm, I'm, I kind of go back to Patrick's point though, which is we are supposed to, we, the trust, changing my hats here. The trust has to exercise its independent judgment based facts that you do not have.
That's right.
Thing that I found helpful with Bill being available is he can create, he can can disassemble any misrepresentation that's been made with respect to the nature of the, of the negotiation. And so again, we, we have a trust.
Got it.
And, and the trust will discuss it.
And so, so the thing, I think the message, if I could translate you into street speak, is we can't mess with what the trust is empowered to do by ordinance. We can intervene with them, but it would be good if they came and they gave us their perspective and why they did what they did. Because there were people who didn't quite get it yesterday and were asking about it. So now it, Bill came and explained to us.
And, and that means, Madam Chair, that means, Madam Chair, as, as Mary alluded to, I think, post-commitment letter.
Okay.
For me anyway, I mean, there's, the boards voted, they've sent out the commitment letter and the, and it's locked in. So we aren't influencing them, which we can't do before they make their full formal decision.
Art, Art has expressed it perfectly in terms of, we, the trust is supposed to make its decision without any influence outside of its negotiations with the.
Okay, I can, I can accept that. I just.
And we'll discuss it, we'll discuss it at the trust tomorrow because I really, I can't speak on behalf of the trust until.
But the other thing is the trust can talk to Patrick, since Patrick's on the trust board. And Patrick can say, here's where I'm seeing what residents want or whatever. And he can help, I mean.
Yeah, I, 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 I do when I ask and when I can offer that insight because that's about all I can offer to these, these financial people. But, um, the, uh, I, I will just say this, that the, the trust also is doing these decisions absent of the execution of the site plan. You know, the, the actual construction, right? So when there are traffic concerns and health and safety concerns and sewer concerns, they're not aware of that when they're making those decisions. They're assuming that those things are gonna get worked out.
And that's fine.
Your, your, your board, you know, when we're doing these, these jobs. And so i- it's, uh, how do I say it another way? I, you know, not every trust application has to be accepted by the commission and vice versa, right? So, um, that's, you know, that, because there are merry, there are myriad of issues that come up that we have to evaluate. And that's, that's just the way it is, you know? If people go, uh, you know, go forward with haste in a decision, you know, and then the execution doesn't happen, then that's, that's
Yeah.
different story, so.
And obviously, the commitment letters are expressly conditioned. So we're not, um, it's conditioned upon, among other things, receiving the necessary, um, planning and zoning approval, obviously.
I would, I would recommend if those of you haven't read it, if we, if you go through what the trust's, you know, doctrine is, that, I think that's instructive as the, to the mindset. And then obviously, having Bill and talking to Bob before and everyone else, y- you can understand, um, a lot of what they, they stress over when they're looking at these applications.
Yeah. And, um, okay, so the other thing, just to make the point, and I know I'm a broken record about this, but just saying it again. The legislative session this year is what's known as a short session and it's election year. They are not expected to pass anything that is super controversial. Next year, it'll be post-election and it'll be a long session. We were told already last year that we could expect some aggressive housing legislation if towns did not make meaningful progress. So I know that Peter Lowe hates it when I say, you know, we don't have a strong hand, but we have to think of the trade-offs. Units in total that we add versus where we can push a little bit on our traditional architectural scale. I agree with Peter Levy, our average scale is no more than three and a half stories in town, average scale. But on the other hand, can we push that to four or five in certain parts of town in order to get a higher number of affordable units? Or are you willing to risk not having made enough progress as we move forward? The, this legislative stuff is not gonna go away. And not only that, but again, as P, as Bill Finger said, taking care of our residents, this isn't for strangers. This is for people we know. Um, so taking care of our own people is important. Okay, I'm gonna stop, get off my soapbox and announce the next application before Mr. Hagney.
Si- si- since I'm here, uh, the fly on the wall, um, the, the reality is eight dash thirty G has been around since nineteen eighty-nine. And although changes have they haven't been.
Yeah.
Twenty percent to twenty-five percent to thirty percent of affordables, uh, using area median income and now state median income, uh, the, the, the changes have been very incremental. Um, and, uh, and I, uh, it, what, what, what? I think a lot of the, the people coming in with these plans are looking to do is to say, well, this is the reality of what we have. This is the vehicle that is out there to use. How can we make it work better here than it might work elsewhere in the state? Because we have very high property values, we have very high construction costs. Things are different here. How do we make it happen so that this can be good for Greenwich? And we can get more benefit out of it. And, and that's really where, uh.
But where, when my, my February, March, April anxiety comes in is Open Communities Alliance is back with the Fair Share Bill. You remember that that bill will eventually seek to bring us to twenty percent affordable, not ten. There's a bill out there that I showed, I shared with Patrick and Tracy, which gives us points for density. Not clear what the penalty would be. It's not gonna go forward, we don't think. Um, Desegregate Connecticut is back with the transit-oriented, the live-work-ride. Those bills, I, I circulated to you guys what the bills that are out there are. It, it, it's not eight thirty G and it's about, again, bills not being well-written in a lot of cases. And how do you become more inclusive, which is the state's goal, while preserving the scale of your community? It's very, very hard. And I'm gonna stop now. And our next application is Andrew J. and Susan L. Robertson at four eleven Stanwich Road. And it is a five point nine nine zero acre parcel. And they have a proposal to convert to an HO. Uh, it's two acre zoning and they are proposing to convert to HO. And Mr. Hagney, if you would go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. And there were a couple of comments that came out of the briefing yesterday. Uh, this is a property where the house was constructed in, uh, eighteen forty-six. Uh, and, um, you know, Abraham Lincoln didn't sleep there or anything like that. But it, it is in a very prominent location at the end of Stanwich Road. Uh, and it is, has, uh, some very distinctive stone walls around it, very distinctive, uh, uh, front onto the street. Um, and it, it's a large piece in the, uh, in the two acre zone being almost, uh, six acres. Uh, it was, it's been known as the Alcana Meat House, uh, in a Greek revival style. Uh, it's had, uh, historical, uh, analysis that we had done by, uh, Nils Kirtius, uh, who does this, uh, in town, uh, for a number of, uh, of historic structures. He found that there are very historic and important features, uh, to this in his, in his description of it. And, um, uh, what, uh, the, uh, Robertsons are looking to do here is to construct rather than the, subdivide and create another large house on the property to have a single-story, twenty-eight-hundred-square-foot cottage that would be used as part of a, of a, a, a family compound. You, in, over the next couple of years, you're gonna hear that from me a couple of times because, uh, I, I, there's a trend now of family compounds, you know, that, that multi-generational properties that, uh, that, uh, 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 that, that people are looking to develop here. And, uh, you have a very large eighty-five-hundred-square-foot, uh, uh, existing house on the property. Has some very attractive formal gardens, uh, historic trees, uh, uh, stone walls both within the property and, uh, and surrounding it that, uh, that, uh, create that, the historic look that you're looking, I think, to preserve. Uh, so, um, uh, w- we are in front of the HTC, uh, next Wednesday. Uh, I've submitted a, a, a certif- a request for a certificate of appropriateness from them. Uh, I, I want to say I did hear from the attorney for a, a neighbor, uh, just to the west, uh, that recently purchased property and, uh, uh, they are concerned about, uh, screening. Um, uh, the Robertsons are as well. Uh, we have, uh, uh, James Doyle, uh, as our landscape architect. I spoke with him earlier. And, uh, he says, uh, the screening is very robust between the properties and, but we will, we will talk to the, the neighbors about what, uh, uh, what concerns they have so we can address those, uh, as well. But we, we think that this, given its prominence and its, you know, unique estate setting, um, I, I think we are, uh, addressing the standards that are in, uh, six dash one oh nine uh, C, uh, in terms of the, uh, uh, the appropriateness of rezoning this to an HO.
Our main concern has always been, okay, go ahead.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, you can talk.
All right. Mr. Hagney, um, beyond the general characteristics that, that you had just summarized uh, of the uniqueness of this, uh, this house and this property, et cetera. Are, are there specific historic elements that you can cite, uh, that would warrant and qualify um, this for the HO? Um, it, I, I, you know, I understand eighteen forty-six and all, all the rest of it. And then also, could you address how, um, the position of the second structure, uh, will fit in with the, uh, the HO's uh, language of being not, not only a subsidiary, you know, a complimentary and secondary structure, but also the, it, it's visibility from the road, et cetera. Just from, from just looking on a map, and, and I unfortunately have not gone to see this, I didn't have time today. But, um, it looks like it's kind of off to the side and I, as opposed to behind or in, in some, you know, subsidiary kind of, uh, posture.
Mr. Hagney, before you answer.
Yes.
Is Mr. Doyle with you?
Uh, if Mr. Doyle is in the uh, audience, yes, he. He's uh, he he's lasted till the end of the meeting here.
It's only nine ten, the evening is yet young, Mr. Doyle.
Well, we hope it's the end of the evening, I agree with Mr. Higgin.
Go ahead. Okay, Mr. Higgin, you were gonna answer and Mr. Doyle is with you now.
So uh, if if you look at the uh, survey that we have, uh, that's uh, a part of our presentation material, it's slide two. Uh, you can see that the the house is itself is fairly close to the road and. Uh, why build your house far away from the road? When uh, your wagon is gonna have a hard time getting to it.
Yeah, it's eighteen forty-six.
So uh, uh, the the single story house is is that we're proposing is. Much farther back from the road, it uh, yeah, it it.
Tom, do you mind if I jump in at this point?
Please, James, I'm I'm glad you're able to attend.
Yeah, I I I thought I was going to get my few seconds of fame when Tom got bumped a few minutes ago, but um. Anyway, I'm very happy to be here and I've been the landscape designer of note for this property for. For actually, um, you know, more than a decade at this point and um. I would say that there's a major couple of positives with regard to the sighting of um. The proposed one-story uh, dwelling. Uh, one is that it utilizes a standalone two-car garage. Um, that's on site currently. And the second part of that is that it actually utilizes an existing driveway, so there's. Not very much infrastructure that's going to be necessary to um. To actually construct this this building, which is pretty much in keeping with. Um, the theme of restoration, preservation. And integration that's gone on in this property for um. For almost two hundred years, I the, I guess to answer one of the previous questions. I don't think that there's any sort of um. Singular item of major historic value here, but there has been. A really great history of sympathetic evolution of architecture and I think the. The landscape reflects that in the way that it embraces, um, you know, open old pasture. And it does have some more intimate formal gardens, but. Over the years, we've created more natural habitats by allowing um, these these uh. Gardens or lawns to um, evolve into natural habitats of flowering meadows and um. Restoration of open lawns into more pasture land.
Great, um, Ms. Jenkins, you have a question?
Uh, yes, um, will this secondary house be visible from the main house?
Yes.
So the big question, um, I started to say that if we were gonna give you two guidance points that I could think of, uh, three. One is, of course, the HTC appropriateness, you're on that already. The other one, Mr. Doyle has anticipated, which is a protection of the historic landscaping. And the character of the landscaping, the third is the commission has always struggled with folks interpreting one oh nine. To mean that you could, that the that that new construction could rival the previous building as long. That we look for it to be absolutely subsidiary and accessory, uh, is there anything else folks want to add as feedback? Oh, okay. Does anybody from the public wish to speak on this application? Robert James, yes, sir.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Okay, firstly, thank you all for allowing me a chance to speak, um, I'm the neighbor, I'm the neighbor to the west. Uh, and I recently purchased this property, um, and I do have some concerns just based on the drawings that I have seen. Um, and I would start by saying, you know, I'm thinking, I'm the only, I'm the only neighbor that's gonna be impacted by this. And I'm the only neighbor that's been impacted so far, given that already, you know, they already cleared all the trees out between. On their side of the property and my side, in my in my property line. Um, and the the location of this, you know, guest house or secondary structure. Um, is is as close as possible to the property line. And given the enormous size of this piece of property, I'm just wondering if, you know, the 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 commission can at least consider. Suggesting they consider pulling it a little bit farther off the property line to allow for some more robust um. Screening in the terms of hedges or uh, evergreen trees that were all there when I bought my property and have all been taken down. Um, and and I and I just think, I I I feel like it's been so jammed into this corner that's directly next to my pool. Um, there's a rock wall here that you can see, there's a small jut out, um. When I bought the property, the rock wall actually went straight down the, it went straight from. I guess I would describe it as the north point of the property to like the southwest. And, you know, within a week of me buying the property, they came in with a backhoe and knocked down the rock wall. And to be fair, they moved the rock wall to to go along the actual property line. Because the property, the rock wall used to not go down the property line, it used to go straight and the property line does jut out. Um, but you know, since I've been there, they've cut down all the trees in the property line, they've knocked down the rock wall, now they want to put a secondary house. Right on top of my pool, so I would like to express them a little bit frustrated.
Well, if if actually um, part of the regulation under which we would consider this. Um, speaks to your point and it says that additions, et cetera, et cetera, additions shall not. Destroy. Uh, spatial relationships that char- characterize the property. So if the addition changes the spatial relationship, the commission has to consider. Whether this addition changes the relationship of the buildings to other properties. To the property line, et cetera. That's one of the things, exactly your point, is one of the things we're required to consider, so it's it's good you reminded us of that, but.
If I could add one.
Yeah, go ahead.
I I, you know, I would say like, I I don't have any desire to be a disagreeable neighbor, it's not who I am, I have reached out to my neighbor via uh, Mr. Higgin. Uh, and I have not heard back yet, um, in in an attempt to be uh, neighborly in this discussion. And and I don't have any delusion of stopping this and frankly speaking, I think the drawings are quite attractive. Um, and and they own a beautiful piece of property, in fact, I'm jealous of it. But I just, all I'm asking is that if they would at least consider pulling it a little farther off and then more robust screening, that's all I'm asking.
Yeah, and so basically, you're saying it's altering the existing spatial relationship is is.
It certainly, it certainly would alter my spatial relationship.
Exactly, okay.
Yeah, without question.
And that is, that is one of the things that um, that we are to consider. And so come back when this comes back in, but hopefully, um, the applicant will look at whether. Um. And there's several references to spatial relationships in our regulations, so. Um, the applicant will hopefully consider that, Mr. McRae, you have your hand up?
Uh, yes, Mr. Doyle, can you uh, I've got a question about the um, the landscape plan, uh.
Oh, before you go to the landscape plan, we still have, we still have the the neighbor on on, so why don't we let him finish? And then we'll go to your line.
That that would be, that would be it for me.
Or unless, Mr. McRae, were you relating it to the neighbor's comment?
Kind of.
Okay, then go right ahead, Mr. Doyle, um, share the landscape plan, we'll keep Mr. James with us. I guess it's Patrick who's sharing, right? Okay. So there is the screening of the proposed dwelling.
Uh, page twenty-four?
Yeah, we're looking at it, oh.
Sorry, that's page twenty-four.
Yeah, I liked, I liked it, yeah, that's good.
No, no, that, not that one, page twenty-four.
The difference twenty-four.
He's on twenty-five.
I thought I was on twenty-four, I got it.
He's on twenty-five.
It's the actual landscape plan, not that one.
It's the actual landscape plan.
Not the, the colorized.
This page, no.
Yeah, but that's pretty, okay, here we go, okay, zoom a little bit for those of us who, yeah, there we go. All right, okay, so there we go to the property line and yeah, missing, okay, got it. So that's on Mr. James's.
Mr. Doyle, the the uh, screening hedge, when you're talking about screening hedge.
Yep.
What is the about, about the height of that, what, what would you say that's going to be?
So, um, good question, Nick, this, this landscape is a reflection and a continuation of. Other um, parts of the property. And I think some of those are in um, Tom's presentation. But those um, hedges are to be approximately eight feet tall. And um, just to give, give this a little bit more context. You will have an eight-foot-tall hedge. The existing wall on the property line is approximately four feet tall. It's it's an old farm rubble wall and um, the neighbors. Uh, and just because I was at this property yesterday, the neighbor's swimming pool is approximately. Another ten feet lower in elevation than um, the back of our property. And it's also approximately fifty feet away from this property line. And there are existing evergreens on the neighbor's property that do help shield. Um, you know, the two properties currently and our landscape is only gonna serve. To sort of buffer that. And then if you go further to the left where that wall juts out, um. Into that, into that one area, if your cursor goes straight, straight back.
Which wall?
Yeah, right in, right in that area, that area in fact is going to be at least two to three feet lower. Again, and um, none of that will be visible. The neighbor's property will not be visible from that lower seating area, uh, the neighbor will not see any of that. There's ample screening. Um, all the way buffering between the building and the neighbor's property. And I, and of course, I'm always happy to, to meet and explain and present the um.
That'd be great.
Imagery associate, associated with the landscape plan.
Sounds fabulous, why don't we make that suggestion, Mr. Doyle? If Mr., if nobody minds, if you could meet with Mr. James and you could address his concerns. And then Mr. Higgin also will know that we're gonna be looking at. Um, what this building does relative to the spacing of the properties, et cetera, Mr. Levy, you you have your hand up. And two other people besides, okay.
A photographer or two might be instructive.
Yes, um, yeah, because we can't really see this easily ourselves. Is what I figured out, so um, yes, a photograph would be very helpful, I mean, we can Google Earth it, which I did yesterday. But it wasn't super helpful either because it is treed. Um, uh, okay, so then I.
Is it possible for me to share screen and I could show you an existing condition photograph?
Um, I would just say, take our feedback.
Okay.
Into consideration and then when you're in here for the app, because the pre-app is supposed to be quicker and I'm gonna. Um, Patrick's got something to say and then Nick is back.
Um, Mr. Higgin or 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 Mr. Doyle, the setbacks here along the, so this is the existing structure as I'm understanding it, right?
Correct.
Yeah, that.
How are these setbacks being meeting zoning? I I'm I'm looking at twenty-two and sixty.
So uh, as an accessory structure in the rear yard. Uh.
Twenty-five.
The setback would be twenty-five feet.
Yeah, I don't know, maybe I'm just not reading this, this says twenty-two.
It says twenty-two, yes.
So how is that meeting regulations?
Because under the HO zone, uh, you can have reduced setbacks for structures.
Were the accessory structures or for the, I I I'm not sure I'm following that.
Um, so when you look at the incentives. Um, in the regulations, uh, D one oh nine, uh, D. Uh. Planning Zone and Commission, they authorize any use presently permitted, well, no, that's, I'm sorry, that's the commercial. Uh, for structures on sites in the two, four acre zone, other residential zones, commission may authorize additional dwelling units. Um, and provide the total number and not exceed density. Uh. And modify setbacks and or green area requirements.
Where are you seeing that, because I've never, I don't remember seeing that.
One oh nine, D, three.
Three, I'm on three, and then where does it say the setback?
Last line is the commission may modify setbacks and or green area requirements.
Um, you're on D three and before you get to A.
At the last line there. The commission may also modify setbacks and or green area requirements.
I'm not seeing that sentence.
It it's the last sentence in in number three under D incentives.
Right before you get to A.
The commission may consider any fraction of a unit as a whole unit.
Next sentence.
Yes.
Oh, the commission may also modify setbacks and or green area requirements. Well, Mr. Higgin, you just got your answer, I don't think we're gonna be real interested in that. In the setback modification.
Uh, as an extra in the rear yard, even in this zone, it's.
Well, but the thing is, you've got someone saying, a neighbor saying, we don't want you to be modifying it. And there's a lot of other language in here that says it's gotta work for the neighborhood. And gotta work for the zone and shouldn't change the spatial rela-, just to what I initially quoted to Mr. James, it's gotta work with the. Spatial relationships that exist in the neighborhood, so um. I believe we would like to see you find a way to work with at least the existing setback.
This also um, occasioned me to wanna know what what it.
Nice work, Patrick.
What exactly is the applicant's rationale for conversion to an HO?
He wants to be able to build the additional resident. I mean, look.
Right, no, let let me explain. Wait, if we wanna have it as an additional residence, uh, we'll come in with a subdivision, we'll have a two acre lot. And uh, we'll build a, you know, an eight thousand square foot house, which is what we're entitled to do in this zone. That we could do.
Not sure that answers my question.
And that would be thirty-five feet off the property line.
Look. Mr. Higgin, don't go there. Mr. Higgin.
That's pretty high.
No, no.
So.
No, I'm gonna keep talking, no, no.
I thought this was a very worthy app to bring.
The commission is not initially.
The case, we'll.
Mr. Higgin, uh, Mr. Higgin, the commission is not initially, your guidance from the pre-app. Is the commission is not initially receptive to a modification of the setbacks. You can do that with what you will, but the commission is not initially receptive, make your case.
Understood.
As you will, um, I always say that you get a lot more, catch more flies with honey. So, um, and a big stick sometimes, but um. It's not, on the other hand, if there's fabulous screening and Mr. Doyle meets with Mr. James and everybody's happy. The commission may feel better about it because the critical party affected by your development. Has accepted it, but we're looking to preserve neighborhoods here, so that's very, very specific about six one oh nine. All right, anything else from the commission? All right, Mr. James, I were kept you for a long time, you were lucky, thank you, sir. Anybody else from the public wish to speak? Please raise your virtual hand. No, okay. And we have Nick back.
Or did you? Mr. Hegney, when you return, because we've always stumbled with this in the past. I think it's actually a, a, a good explain, explanation narrative comparison to indicate that the proposed new structure is complementary and subservient to the existing structure. Uh, in size, in scale, in, in, in perceived use. As an example, does it look like a barn kind of thing? Because we've stumbled at it before and I think kind of getting that out of the way goes a long way to checking all of the things that you have to do in the six one oh nine thing.
So we, we gave them initially, we gave Mr. Hegney three pieces of feedback. The landscaping, get your certificate of appropriateness and maintain the, and maintain the accessory nature of the building, make sure the building's accessory. We have added to a reminder to him about the relationships of the buildings to the property lines, et cetera, and that it be compatible with the neighborhood. Okay, Mr. Hegney, I bet you had fun with us tonight. Patrick?
Just, just one clarification, Madam Chair, significant appropriateness is not needed. That's when a building is already historically designated.
Okay.
It just do, it's, it's just a comment from the H D C. When you're establishing the H O, I just want to make sure that we're saying the proper terms.
Yep. Yeah, you know what I meant, right, Mr. Hegney?
Yes, I did.
I think we all did, but I just, I just
Tired puppy. Okay.
I just add the, I just add the point about the visible impact on the streets gate.
Good. Okay, so you got five points. Mr. Levy's back.
Oh, I, I just wanted to make sure I understood. The, the existing garage is an historic structure. Would that, would that be considered a historic structure?
That was a hoax.
I don't know what the age
No, it's not. That would not be considered a historic structure.
No, it's the main house.
It's just the main house.
It's the main house and, and, and the, and the grounds.
Yeah.
The, the stone walls within the bill, within the property lines.
Well, as I assume the existing garage is not original to the property.
Correct.
Okay, yeah, okay. Got it. Thanks.
Okay. We got all the public comment. We tried to keep it under twenty minutes. It was tight. And we will see you both. Thank you, Mr. Doyle. It was nice seeing you. And Mr. Hegney, I hope you enjoyed your evening with the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Always, Madam Chair.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
All right, I hereby move approval of the February sixth minutes.
May I, may I, may I comment on the minutes, Madam Chair?
Of course, oh my.
I know, well, somebody's got to do it at least once every hundred years. We're still listing Bob Barilak as an, as an alternate. I don't know what the effective date was of Bob.
Yeah, so the charter says you are a member until you are replaced.
Placed. Thank you.
That's, that's why.
March eleventh, March eleventh, you check it.
Well, maybe, we hope.
Well.
No, well, that's true, because if he doesn't get replaced, then he's still there.
Being ghosted. Go ahead.
But we already took away his town I D, right?
Yes, and I escorted him to the border, Madam Chair.
Yeah, exactly.
Keep you in the minutes. Okay, a motion has been made.
And we got his parking pass back.
Oh my God, poor guy. You know, he's still, no, he doesn't come that much because they meet on Zoom. Okay, you, you guys, a motion has been made and seconded. All of us who were here, who are here, were there. So a voice vote, bye.
Bye.
Bye, yeah, okey dokey. And then we have one, oh, it's motion passes five, nothing. Passes five, nothing. And we have one decision which was
Four one four, round hill.
Thank you. Mr. McRae?
Four one four, Round Hill Road, application P L P Z twenty twenty-three, four, five, seven, final site special permit. Applicant is seeking approval to construct a poolhouse cabana and alter out the attached garage with roof dormers on a site that will exceed a hundred and fifty thousand cubic feet of building volume on a six-point-six-four acre parcel loaded in, located in the R A four zone. Whereas the application P L P Z twenty twenty-one, two, five, two, three, five, two, four was approved by the commission at the two, twelve, thirteen public hearing for volume. And application twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-three, six, three was approved by the commission at the February first, twenty-one public hearing for volume. The commission finds that the health department has issued comments dated two fourteen, indicating approval of a six-bedroom central connection for the pool cabana. Engineering, the applicant has submitted a journey description dated, letter dated eleven, eight, twenty-three. And Whitlins issued a permitting questionnaire on ten, twenty-six, twenty-three, indicating no action required. Therefore, motion approve the application noting the following, all conditions of the original approvals shall be continued. And the applicant shall address any and all remaining staff or any departmental issues.
Do you have a second?
I second.
Oh, I think, I think Wells beat you, Mr. Levy. I'm going to give it to Wells to second this motion. Mr. Levy, how do you vote? Yeah, we got. Okay, Mr. Levy was an I, Mr. Wells.
Aye.
Mr. Lowe.
Aye.
Mr. McRae.
Aye.
Albin is also an I. And with that, the motion passes five, nothing.
Aye for an aye.
Uh-oh, the funny guys are here. Anything anybody wants to say before we go cheerfully into the sunset?
Good night.
Good night. Rough night, you guys. I'm so tired. Bye.
Didn't we have
Bye. We had fun. Thank you.
Aye.